Yes, I'm here. Yes.
As soon as we're about to start, client call. My clapboard. Okay, are we on? Okay.
Recording in progress.
The meeting will come to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Bueno.
Present.
Trustee Fang. Trustee Henderson. Absent. Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Moreno.
Here.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Veres.
Here.
Trustee Martinez.
For President, if we can have the clerk. Trustee Fang has resigned from the board.
That was an error. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. He didn't want to have it come up in all votes to come forward.
Trustee, trusty Vedas, if you would just give me one more nanosecond, I would have, but, but I, I, but thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
You, you beat me to it, though. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Oh, this is becoming a monthly thing. Sure.
Okay.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is indivisible,
Today, we would like to adjourn, to adjourn the meeting in memory of two full-time retired counselors from Los Angeles City College who recently passed away. This is Ms. Carmen Sonia Soto. Professor Boris Lopez worked at Los Angeles City College for 21 years. He was Chair of the Counseling Department on two separate occasions and was elected as a district chair, Chair of Chairs, leading the counseling discipline on matters affecting all campuses. In 2017, while serving as the Counseling Chair, Professor Lopez worked with, with the senior administration, the union, and the academic senate leadership to advocate that all regular and contract counseling faculty be granted D bases. Professor Lopez also served as professor for the LACC, LACC Latino Employees Association, OEA. Professor Carmen Sonia Soto worked in the LAC, Los Angeles Community College for nearly 45 years, assisting students as a counselor and professor of English. She had an adventurous spirit and traveled the world with her husband, Tomas Bear, a retired professor at Caset LA. She is survived by her three children, five grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. On behalf of, before, before I get to that, I think Chancellor Rodriguez, you wanted to say a few words?
Yes, I thank you, Board President Bueno, members of the board, colleagues who are listening. I wanted to say just a few words. First, again condolences to La Familia Soto for their great loss and amazing 45 years of service to our district for Profesora Soto. But I did want to say something about nuestro hermano Boris Lopez. His final resting place took place last, last Friday where he was surrounded by hundreds of family and friends and colegas over the last 40 or so plus years where he's been an educator activist in a variety of fronts. I met Mr. Lopez way, way back and early 90s when several of us, including many who are on the line today through the Latisha A Network, were forming a coalition of people who would stand for undocumented student rights and Boris Lopez was amongst the first of them through this network and through his other advocacy work as a former university recruiter and counselor and in other ways that we've known him. I simply wanted to state that we remember him well. I remember him well as a just vociferous stalwart advocate for the rights of students, for the rights of undocumented students, for the rights of poor people. And we remember Boris Lopez in loving memory and I appreciate the board, a journey in his loving memory. Our condolences to his familia. Boris Hermano, we love you. Rest in peace. Rest in power.
Thank you, Chancellor, very much. Before we go on, I think it's, it's important to acknowledge that it, it, it may not be occurring here in the United States, but what is occurring in, in, in Ukraine right now with the invasion by, by Russia is horrendous and that there's a lot of individuals and families that are suffering. And let's keep them in our, in our memories. And also that any conflict does not extend further and that hostilities can stop. We've seen a lot of this in, in history and as human beings, we have to, I believe, at least acknowledge when you have a significant amount of suffering that's occurring.
For President Bueno.
Yes, trustee Bella.
Is there any way we could look into perhaps any investments, any, you know, current contracts that are related to Russia and see if we could perhaps look at a moratorium?
Trustee Bella, thank you. We, we will. The other, the other thing, now that you, now that you brought that up, you know, if there, if there are student equity activities occurring, you know, if the presidents could let, let us know, I think it would be important. We have a significant Russian and Ukrainian community here in Los Angeles and, and we, as an institution of higher education, I think it's important to make sure that, that we're a place of, of peace. And thank you very much, trustee Bella. Before we, before we move on to the order of business, Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir. No changes. Let's present it as we'd like you to take the items.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and, and order of business?
So moved.
Trustee, as trustee Vedas, right?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas. A second trustee Moreno. Any objection? They moved. Lupe, no objection. General Counsel, when I do that, is that okay? Or do I need to have the, the roll call?
For teleconference, we have to have a roll call.
Okay. You know what? For some reason, I knew you were going to say. So Lupe, roll call.
Trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 and January 20, 2nd, 22? And for the record, I also want to, want to acknowledge that trustee Henderson is, has joined the meeting and she is here at the ESC in downtown Los Angeles. So may I have a, may I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 and January 22nd, 2022 meetings? Trustee Henderson.
Approve.
Trustee Hoffman, second. Roll call.
Trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion for the approval of the January 22nd board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Vela, second. Roll call.
Trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Okay. Do any, thank you very much, board members. So reports from the representatives of employee organizations. Do any members of the resource table wish to re-recognize at this time to make comments before the board? So, any, anyone from the resource table?
Yes. Joanne Haywood.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Chancellor, President Wellner, Board of Trustees and colleagues. I'm speaking on behalf of our President Hazel Alonso, who apologizes for not being able to attend this afternoon as she is currently serving on the District Hiring Committee. I assure you that her sentiments will be conveyed to the utmost standard. Let me start by saying that we at AFD 1521A classified staff have strived to build upon our working relationship with the district. And let me pause for a second. This is the appropriate time for me to give my comments, right? Or were you asking for me to say something else? Hello?
Research table during this time period, so it would be with relation to anything related to our, the organizations.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So let me begin. Let me start by saying that we at AFD 1521A classified staff have strived to build upon our working relationships with the district, especially during the current climate of COVID. We rose to the ask. When COVID sent us all scrambling home to telework, we adapted to the immediate changes that were implemented to assure continuity of business. And most importantly, and recently upon the ask to return to in-person work. With the fear of COVID still prevalent and with the continuous issues still existing with safe working conditions, AFD 1521A came back. We have battled sickness, fear, worry for our welfare and our family's welfare because it was stressed on multiple occasions of how important we were. LACC needed us, they said. It was all hands on deck. We were told of our value and how we were the frontliners in getting students back engaged with the online environment. So AFD 1521A answered the call and we returned. With all this being said, it's me to say that what's being felt by AFD 1521A is that we were somewhat misled. In the process of our current negotiations, it became very apparent that there was a complete lack of consideration and attention to the needs and the requests of 1521A staff. While the union took the time to present accurate, verable, and complete data, the district failed to reciprocate. What are we to think when we are delayed counterproposal with the excuse that resource material was forthcoming? But the data was in fact completed months back when an original proposal was presented. How are we not to be offended by the district counterproposal on numbers that is even less than what we currently make already? As the president of AFD 1521A, how can I go back to my members and tell them that the district does not respect them and needs them? But yet, oh, I should say that the district respects them and need them, but yet the district's action doesn't match their words. AFD 1521A's loyalty, dedication, and hard work should demand and merit equitable wages for the lowest classification to the highest. My colleagues will be speaking shortly and I applaud them. They will be valuable, honorable, and honest and sincere in what they need from the district. This has to be rhetoric that needs continuous attention. Patients such as Target can raise their minimum wage to $24 an hour, but an institution such as LACC who prides itself on education and rewarding hardworking and dedication cannot follow suit. I implore you, this body, to listen to the voices of their constituents. Please give them the consideration that is warranted, that they deserve, and that the district has the means to provide. I do thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Board President Bueno, Vice President Vela, Vice President Henderson, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez. Happy Women's History Month. I am Blanca Barajas, Coworkers Director at Los Angeles Southwest College and President of the 2022 Classified Management Association. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the new CMA Executive Board. Serving as Secretary is Mr. Jorge Mata, Technology Project Manager. Serving as Treasurer is Dr. Armand Agaghanian, Director of the East Los Angeles College Foundation. Serving as, as past president and someone whom we're very proud of on her recent promotion is Ms. Anna Salazar, Acting Dean of Student Services at Los Angeles Harbor College. And last, but certainly not least, serving as our treasured President Emeritus slash Historian is Ms. Leila Menzies. My colleagues and I look forward to continue to provide the board with reports that impact the over 170 classified managers of the LACC in future meetings. Please note that a formal written notice listing the 2022 CMA Board is forthcoming. I thank you for your time.
Next person.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Anosian. Representing SCU Loca 99. I would first, I'd like to start off by expressing my heartfelt sympathy for the people in Ukraine for experiencing such a senseless war that caused so many innocent people to lose their lives and home. My prayers of safety, healing, and peace goes out to everyone out there while they go through this turbulence and challenging time. Today, I would like to bring to the board a concern that needs your, this board, immediate attention. If you can remember, several months back, brought to this board attention, concerns regarding the custodial evening shift being eliminated at Trade Tech, which greatly impacted our members. Since this change has occurred, we had many of our members either resign, transfer, transferred, or is on leave as a result of, of the impact of the B shift, evening shift elimination. I also mentioned as a result of eliminating the custodial evening shift, because the new culinary department was shut down due to health and sanitation reasons because there was not, because the area was not being properly cleaned at the appropriate time, which would have been the late evening shift. I bring this to your attention again because this matter has not been resolved. In fact, things has gotten worse. I don't know if anyone from this board ever took a tour of the new culinary arts department. It's a huge two-story building, state of the art. It used to be when there was a late evening shift, several custodians would clean and sanitize the culinary department. Now the custodial staff to clean, the area has been downsized to one custodian being responsible for cleaning the entire department while students are there cooking and baking. This is insane. Not only is this insane, this is a safety issue and OSHA violation. There were many complaints. So personally, I went to the facility today and spoke to several staff faculty students and a steward there. And their major complaint was that, that the fact is the building is, is not getting clean properly. And I was informed that students are cleaning the culinary arts department. Part of the curriculum for the student is not only the cooking aspect, but the cleaning up, but the cleaning up of their area. But the amount of cleaning up has become so intrusive that it has started to impact students wanting to even be there. And they're not there to learn how to cook and be a custodian. That's our job. So, you know, again, I'm asking this board to look into the situation. I invite all of you to go to Trade Tech, speak to the staff, speak to the students, see what's actually going on over there. This is just not hearsay. And, um, you know, our, our local, we already, you know, informed administration that this wasn't going to work, but it seemed like everything is just going on deaf ears. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Next speaker from the resource table.
Should I go next?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, and members of the public. My name is Angela Cheveri. I'm President of the District Academic Senate. First of all, I want to join my colleagues by, and some of the former speakers by expressing my sympathy and support to the people of Ukraine as well as the families of Boris Lopez and Sonia Soto Bear. I'd also like to say, announce that the DAS is very pleased to inform everyone that starting next week, we will have two new faculty members working with the Sustainable Environment Institute. They are Beth Ables from Pierce College and Joaquin Lindor from Valley. So we're very excited to have them on board and to advance our sustainability efforts in the district. Next week, we are also holding District Discipline Day. The theme is going to be Equity Through Excellence and Innovation. That's going to be Friday, March 11th from 9:00 AM till 3:30 PM. This event is open to all faculty. It's eligible for Flex Credit and faculty can register at the Vision Resource Center. We will be receiving updates from the State Academic Senate as well as on local student success initiatives here in our district. Finally, I want to mention our concern about some proposed legislation, which is AB 1705 by Erwin. I just want to let you know that we are very concerned that this will further restrict our ability to serve our students during a period of profound learning disruption. So we will be having additional discussions about this particular piece of legislation. So thank you and we're looking forward to a good meeting.
Next speaker from the resource table.
I'll go. This is Joanne.
President Waddell.
Sure. This, thank you, Board President. This is Joanne Waddell, President of the Los Angeles College Faculty Guild, AFD 1521. And if I might start on a bright note, I wish you all a happy Read Across America Day. There's still time left today to grab your favorite book. Dr. Seuss works nicely here. And go old school with real pages or digital if you must, and celebrate the privilege of being able to read what you want, when you want, and where you want. Next, as a point of information, the Guild is engaged in the exercise of its internal elections. Most of the elected positions are contested, which most would agree is a sign of an engaged membership. If history is an indicator of the future, buckle up. Another round, it looks like another round of effects bargaining may need to be initiated as a result of a potential upcoming settlement agreement. That settlement being broadcast today on traditional media and social media that will affect wages, hours, and working conditions. So we expect to hear about that soon. And lastly for today, I'm not sure if the fog of the pandemic, which has shrouded us for three years, is truly lifting or just taking a break. But if it is lifting, for however briefly, we need to take a break and assess the changes which may have been choices and which of our efforts moving forward are truly best for our students, something we may not know for some time as some are cloaked in well-intentioned, if misguided, outcomes. And while we sort all that out, we need to make sure we're listening carefully to the students, employees, and community who are telling us loud and clear what they want and what they need if we will only listen. You'll get a chance to hear from Trade Tech faculty in just a few moments. Finally, in solidarity with our Ukrainian brothers and sisters, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, President Waddell. Lupe, are there any other comments? I mean, read persons from the resource table?
I'd like to see.
The president's online.
This is Mary Jo Piegel. I'm acting president of the Teamsters. First, I'd like to announce that Dr. May, Dr. May Villanueva will be serving as our acting vice president of our unit. She's going to be finishing out my term as I'm serving as acting president. And she's returning to our executive board where she served as executive secretary for two years. So we're glad to have her back. Secondly, I'd like to thank the district for providing an updated COVID-19 testing schedule for campuses and responding to the feedback from campuses about adjusting the testing dates. Our members did have some concern about receiving slow test results. In some cases, results were received four days after testing and in worst cases, testing results were never received. Lastly, I'm pleased to have worked with the labor units to conclude the effects bargaining of revised Board Policy 2900. Our members are glad for the 24 hours of COVID-related leave provided as a result of that next bargaining process. And a couple of weeks ago, Senate Bill 114, which we authorized the COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave was approved and became law. Our members are also interested in learning more about accessing this supplemental paid sick leave of up to 80 hours due to qualifying reasons related to COVID-19. The first effects bargaining meeting is scheduled for this Friday and I look forward to working with my fellow union leaders and the district. Thank you.
The president's go.
Are there any other individuals from the resource table, Lupe?
Dr. Fang, you can unmute yourself.
Monday?
Yes, we have presence on the panelists. We can ask for Dr. Fang. She's next.
Okay. President Wan.
Good afternoon, Board President Bueno, trustees, and Chancellor Rodriguez. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Just a few things to share about Southwest. Happy Women's History Month. I know we're planning some wonderful events that are coming up. I'm very excited to share that we were one of the 30 colleges selected to participate in the Caring Campus Campaign. So we are very much looking forward to that. We have in-person enrollment events scheduled for March, April, and May. Our next upcoming in-person enrollment event will be Saturday, March 19th. And we're expecting a pretty good turnout for that. We'll be sharing our annual report with you all. Very excited about that. There's some great things to look at. So hopefully you'll have that in your inbox very soon. And then we're really brainstorming about looking at some community advisory boards as well as campus advisory boards to discuss increasing Black and Hispanic enrollment at Southwest. That's all I have for today, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. President Gibbons?
Thank you. Just a couple of updates from Valley College and a couple of them are similar to Dr. Awans with being selected for caring campus and having enrollment fairs. Our next two are March 23rd and March 30th for the in-person enrollment fairs. They've been really successful, so I'm excited to see those continue. Of course, we'll continue them in to summer registration and fall registration, but focused on late start classes. Another thing I wanted to highlight was were the efforts of our financial aid outreach team. They've done an amazing job in the month of February, just since February 7th, they've connected with over 1,000 local high school seniors, helping them to fill out their FAFSA's. For me, that, that's a real incredible effort. That's a big change. In the last two years, we have had hardly any direct in-person contact with students and that they were able to connect with over 1,000 is absolutely amazing. We have close to 5,000 local high school seniors, so we still have lots, lots and lots of folks that we want to connect with, but an amazing start in just a few short weeks. Doing enrollment continues to go well. For the spring, we have 85 sections, which is actually double, more than double what we had pre-pandemic. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of effort related to that on a whole bunch of front fronts. Our faculty department chairs, folks in student services, and our academic affairs team has just done a remarkable job. Marketing and branding is also underway, so we're excited to get that into full stride with L3. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight was Internet Day. We're delighted to let you know that we have Dr. Daisy Gonzalez, the Deputy Chancellor for the System, as our keynote speaker next week, March 8th, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Hopefully, everyone will be able to make it. Thank you.
President Gallagher.
Thank you, Board President Bueno. Good afternoon, Board Members, Chancellor Rodriguez, Deputy Chancellor Nish. Just a couple of updates from LACC. We're planning large enrollment fairs to be doing monthly. And it will be similar to the district-wide enrollment fair that we had last year across the district. We'll be doing that each month, beginning early in the summer, throughout the summer. We have events right now, high school students onto campus. We're actually busing them onto campus. High school students onto campus. We're actually busing them onto campus to, uh, engage with them for a number of things. Career, uh, interest inventory testing, uh, meeting with different departments on the campus. And as, uh, President Grivids indicated, uh, it's been challenging for us to get onto the high school campuses, so we decided to bring the high school students to us. We've got some, uh, great advertising going on, uh, out-of-home advertising, which is bus tail, uh, transit stations, um, billboards around town. Also, the banners that you see on Vermont, Melrose and Virgil will be replaced. So, we've got fresh banners going up to get some interest going. And we have our instructional program, Instructional Vice President and Student Services Vice President working very closely together on outreach, our first-year experience and dual enrollment. That seems to be helping. I also wanted to let you know of two, uh, really important, uh, events that we're having for Women's History Month. Uh, we have, uh, Congresswoman Barbara Lee, uh, coming to do a Q and A with us on Wednesday, March sixteenth. There is a documentary that's been done about her called Speaking Truth to Power. We're gonna have that available five days between March eleventh and March fifteenth, and it will be open district-wide for people to view the documentary and join us for the Q and A on March sixteenth. The Q and A is gonna be moderated by Juliana Roosevelt, so we've got some key women there. And our end of the month, uh, fifth annual Women's History Month Tea will be held on Wednesday, March thirtieth, from two o'clock to four o'clock. Our keynote speaker for that day, it will be in person, will be Non-Tombé Naomi Tutu. She will be here in person on that day. The theme for that Women's History, for Women's History Month this year is Women Providing Healing, Promoting Hope, and we were able to bring her to campus to do that. We're also working with representatives from all nine campuses to, uh, bring people together for this Women's History event on March thirtieth. Thank you.
Is there another president who would like to, um, um, per, um, President of Mission College? Armida.
Thank you, President Buelna. Good afternoon, members of the Board, Chancellor Rodriguez. Just a few updates from the northeast San Fernando Valley, Mission College. Um, so, as most of my colleagues, we are in the midst of hosting senior days throughout between now and the month of May. Uh, we've got nine of our feeder high schools bust into each Friday of, of the month, um, totaling about twelve hundred seniors with the goal of having them complete a CCC applied by the time they leave the college. And of course, then the follow-up will be to make sure that we get, we follow up with them and, and get them to the finish line and enroll. Um, we are also in the middle of our campaign to add for late start classes. This semester in particular, about thirty percent of our courses are accelerated courses. So, we've, we've started a, uh, add just one more class campaign with, in collaboration with our faculty. We developed a video where faculty are showing, uh, encouraging students to add another class. Um, and we're also reaching out to students who have enrolled, had enrolled in the fall and haven't enrolled in spring. So, uh, enrollment effort's still going on. And then, finally, I want to continue to remind everybody to mark their calendars. May thirteenth is a culinary cup competition between Harbor Trade and Mission. Or Mission College will be hosting, and the theme this year is Goseina Oaxaca. So, uh, look forward to having you all on our campus. Thank you.
Excellent. Looking for the different types of moles. Um, Harbor College. Interim President Dorado?
Yes, thank you, President Buelna. Sorry about that. I was trying to unmute myself. Uh, thank you for the opportunity and happy Women's Her Story Month. Uh, so, I know that we have a lot of excellent, uh, programs scheduled for that. In addition to everything that we're doing on a weekly basis for enrollment in regards to our in-person and virtual enrollment events, we have been meeting with our local school districts. Uh, yesterday, we met with, um, uh, Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District. We're adding late start, uh, outreach classes for zero period. We're also gonna be attending the Community College Night on Tuesday, March tenth, in person. So, we'll be out there with our outreach team, giving a lot of Harvard College swag to bring in all the students, so that could be harbor-bound. Um, next week, we are meeting with LAUSD Counselors and APs for professional development. Myself and the VPs will be presenting to them. In the morning, we will have the high school counselors and APs, and in the afternoon, we're gonna be presenting to the middle school college, uh, counselors and APs. As you can see, we are working it hard. Um, I also want to give a shout-out to our team. On last Thursday, we had a budget summit, uh, where we, it was well-attended virtually from our, our, our campus. On Friday, we had a new faculty welcome reception in person where we welcomed our faculty hires for the spring. Uh, we were in our student union and we had a good time. We welcomed them the harbor way. Uh, also want to, uh, put a, a bug in your for save the date in regards to our Men of Color Conference scheduled for Friday, March twenty-fifth here at Harbor College. And then, uh, save the date for our fifteenth annual Seahawk Scholarship Golf Classic. We are looking for golfers. If your swing is ready, we have a spot for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Interim President Dorado. Uh, wha- what I didn't hear was wh- what your entry is gonna be in, in the Oaxacan, uh, festival.
Oh, my apologies. We're gonna defend our title, so, uh, it's all good there. And we got the mola ready, and we got the mola ready.
All right. Uh, Interim President Aguilar?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, President Buelna, and Chancellor Rodriguez. Uh, Pierce is, um, honor roll. Uh, as you know, um, the invitation for our choir students, um, uh, for Memorial Day at the Kennedy Center, and everybody is joining in and raising funds. At our goal is to send forty-five to fifty students for free. And we already have seventy individuals and it's a combination of faculty and family members and students that plan to be at this event, so LACCD will be in the house when we get to Washington, DC. Um, we're gonna be on a parade. Uh, it's gonna be an exciting, exciting event. So far, we have raised over seventy thousand dollars. Um, our, our foundation has contributed. ASO has been amazing up here. They contributed forty-five thousand dollars. Um, and, um, the Rotary Club, another twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'm reaching out to, and the Senate is starting an initiative and, um, uh, creating more funds so that they can send, we can send more students. So, it's a really exciting time. This is a, a big effort, and the whole college is joining in and, and getting this, uh, this outcome, which is terrific. Um, similar to my colleagues, we also have registration days. Those have seemed to really be very effective. Um, a combination of phone calls and workshops. Um, we've been able to bring back over fifteen hundred students that had not enrolled in spring. Um, that had enrolled in fall, not enrolled in spring. Um, and we continue to add second eight-week classes. If a class gets full, uh, we add another class so that we can serve, um, our students. Um, we have about five hundred students right now on the waitlist, so as soon as those classes are added to the schedule, we'll be able to capture additional enrollment. Um, and, um, we continue to give Chromebooks away to our students. We are giving away approximately between a hundred and two hundred Chromebooks every week. So, we are very excited to be able to serve our students and, and, um, our our project, um, technology is now growing and expanding to include non-instructional faculty. They're very excited about uh, in the Learning Center, the Library, Counseling Department, Transfer, uh, Center. They all want to u- utilize the out technology to better serve our students. Uh, so, we're, we're excited about that, and, and thanks to Brian Walsh and Brindy Bass for putting this whole thing together. Um, that's it for me today.
Thank you very much. Rounding our culinary competitive, um, school vice and vice chancellor, um, President, um, Vanderwood. Um, I, I'm not specifically asking what you're doing for the festival, but, you know, we will be there.
Hello and good afternoon, uh, Board President Buelna, uh, Trustees and Chancellor. Glad to have this opportunity. I am actually gonna start off with a little bragging about our students. Uh, our, uh, students, nine of our students at Trade Tech have advanced, uh, to, uh, the state for Skills USA. And the categories are two of our students in Culinary Arts, two in Commercial, or excuse me, three in Commercial Baking, three in Plumbing, and one in Restaurant Service. So, uh, stay tuned, uh, for that. They'll complete Compete in the Ontario Convention Center on April twenty-first through the twenty-fourth is where they'll have an opportunity then to advance to the national leadership. And for the last several years, uh, we have been, we've placed in that competition. Also, I want to tell you about, uh, one of our students, uh, Jimu Youssef, uh, who was recently announced as a semifinalist for the Jack Kent Scholarship, uh, and that's the undergraduate, the prestigious undergraduate scholarship. He has, uh, he's a digital media student. Uh, he has a four-point-oh GPA, and he's planning to major in Film and Television. So, we're really excited about, uh, what comes next in that one, so stay tuned. I also, uh, let's see, um, want to mention just a little bit about our, uh, our, as we wrap up our, uh, our basketball, uh, season. Our men's basketball team, I believe, uh, placed, uh, third, uh, in the playoffs. The women, however, will advance to the, or will actually advance to the playoffs, I should say, for the seventh consecutive year. And our men actually finished third in the conference this year, which we know is a really tough conference. As we, I do want to mention that we too, as some of my other colleagues have indicated, I have, uh, been accepted as a part of the Caring Campus Program, and we're really, really excited about that because it gives us that opportunity to look even more intentionally with everything that we're doing on our campus and the student experience. I, I also want to let you know, uh, that, uh, as we talk about the student experience, I'm really excited that, uh, Trade, as we've gone through our process, uh, for faculty, we will actually be hiring, uh, in the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year, two ethnic studies faculty members. Uh, one will be for Chicano Studies and one, uh, the African-American Studies. Uh, we're very proud, uh, allowing us to continue upholding our commitment to equity, uh, inclusion, I, and representation. Uh, as far as our enrollment management events, we're similar to what you've heard from some of the other colleges. Uh, we have continued our whole process with phone calling with faculty and staff. It's kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach that we're using, uh, for enrollment management. And we're hearing from our faculty and our team how much they're actually enjoying making those personal phone calls to our students. Can you, do you want to add another class? Uh, we haven't seen you in a semester or so. Uh, reminders, second eight weeks are starting, so we're continuing that campaign. Uh, we've done two, uh, online open houses, and now in March, we'll do an in-person really heavy push, uh, for second eight weeks. Uh, we then have two more, uh, coming up, uh, that will be in-person as we prepare for the summer, uh, in the summer session. Uh, let me just, we have Senior Day, uh, coming up, and we also have Counselor Day. We will have, not only will we bring the high school counselors to our campus, we're also inviting the principals to meet with myself and the executive team, uh, for lunch. And we will also have our role in enrollment, uh, recruiting event. Those are some of, uh, major, just taking a peek here. I think those are some of the major things. I wanted to make sure that we shared with you this time around. Thank you so much for the opportunity and the time.
Thank you very much. President Limbaugh?
Uh, thank you, President Buelna, members of the Board and Chancellor Rodriguez. Want to share with you some numbers to show you the results of our all-out efforts here at the ins- at West that have been the result of everybody working together. So, with that, in our Cooperative Work Experience Program, we've increased our enrollment from nine students last year to a hundred students this spring, so we're expanding that particular program. In the college promise, our first-year cohort of two-hundred-and-seventy students, seventy-one percent of them are fully enrolled with twelve credits or more right now. And the second-year cohort of a hundred-and-thirty-two students, eighty percent are fully enrolled, and that's the second highest in the district. We hosted yesterday the, with the State Chancellor's Office, the HBCU College Fair. We had over a hundred students attending, talking to twenty-two reps from HBCUs, and several West students were actually signed up, uh, and completed their applications on the spot. In dual enrollment, we had six-hundred-nine K- Twelve student enrollments, um, in, uh, last spring, but we, right now, it looks like we're headed to almost nine hundred student enrollments in dual, uh, enrollments, so many, much credit goes all our good folks over in outreach. We are very proud to be part of the GPS Program in a partnership with the, between Dominguez Hills, Compton, Harbor, and, and Southwest. We're all working together to increase the number of Hispanic and low-income students attaining degrees from, from Dominguez Hills and the STEM fields. West has been working very hard on apprenticeships in this spring. We now have forty-two apprenticeships in dental hygiene, each of them taking five classes, so we're very proud of that initiative move for, moving forward. When you all come to campus this spring, you'll see it festooned with our Aspen Top One Fifty designation and brand-new banners across campus. Tomorrow night, our men's basketball team, which is seeded second in the conference, is in the quarterfinals for the championship. And I'd like to close by thanking, uh, Chancellor Rodriguez, Maria Veloz, and all of you on the board for your continued support of AB nineteen thirteen in our efforts to establish the California Center for Climate Change Education at West. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, President Limbaugh. Um, Mr. Miguel Duñez from East Los Angeles College?
Good afternoon, Board President Buelna, Trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, and colleagues. I'm here representing Dr. Roman, uh, giving an update on East Los Angeles College. Uh, I'll start off with, uh, ELAC continues on focusing on enrollment registration of our students through the spring semester in, in addition to late start. We've added four hundred sections, uh, to the Late Start Program. And to support this effort, we've, uh, enacted a, a process here on campus, which, which President Roman calls Fifty Calls Challenge Campaign, which is a campaign where we have faculty members, staff members, administrators all sign up to each make fifty calls to students to support the efforts of enrollment, uh, whether in the beginning of semester or late start efforts like we are doing so right now. We're also holding telethons this month to push late start classes, along with several registration events, including three, uh, in the month of February, February. Uh, one in Monterey Park, one at South Gate, and a virtual event. In total, we had about over twelve hundred students register. Uh, we're also helping with the Care Four Process, vaccination, FAFSA, any questions the students might have, we're, we're assisted during this process. We're also holding events this week, including Club Rush. It was great seeing students, uh, yesterday here in Monterey Park, and today they had another event at South Gate where we had the, the clubs out recruiting students and students interacting with them. It was beautiful to see the kids out in the yard and, and walking around campus. It was awesome. Uh, the social media ads continue. We're, we've had over one million impressions in the span of four weeks. Additionally, we placed signs and billboards throughout our service area, mailed out mini-schedules to residents in the service area as well. Along with these efforts, uh, and similar to our, our colleagues, we have also enacted our Welcome Days, which is our senior days where we invite our local, uh, K- Twelve partners to come to ELAC, and we're busing them in, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays to come and experience ELAC. Have an orientation, meet the staff, meet students, meet our avalanche. Again, it was a very festive environment yesterday, seeing, uh, we had Vapa and South, uh, Honeyland Park High School and Morgan McKenzie were here, our first three schools that brought their students here. They committed, they left our campus happy, engaged, but also committing to classes in the fall. They've already signed their, their ad slips to commit to English, math, and, and accounting course when they reach into the fall. But we will be doing follow-up in May to each one of those school sites to reconnect with the students and adding additional support to close the loop and ensure that they're on their way to ELAC. Our, our radio ads are also happening now, and we have, again, uh, different, uh, recruitment strategies in place such as text messaging campaigns and email nudging campaigns as well. We're inquiring a lot of information and feedback from our students to identify what is the best way to communicate. A lot of them share various forms of communication, so we're in incorporating those in our, in our social media or nudging campaign to remind students. Uh, in, in closing, we're also, uh, pleased to continue our social justice and racial equity programs and town halls that started two years ago. And we're honored to host Dorades Huerta on March eighteenth in celebration of Women's History Month. You're all invited to attend. Drop by. Uh, we, 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 we welcome you all with open arms. So, thank you all. And that's the end of the report for East Los Angeles College.
And I believe that rounds out all the presidents. Okay. Excellent. Um, then we're gonna move on to public comment. So, um, for com- public comment, um, each speaker will be afforded, um, three minutes, but I'll get to that. If more than seven speakers will be addressing the board on same, um, on the same person or topic, the board may vote to limit the time, the total time for speakers on the same percentage topic. the board may vote to limit the time, the total time for speakers on the same percentage topic to 20 minutes with each speaker, and no less than two minutes. If more than seven speakers have signed up to address the board, then the board president will state, will state the following. Since the board rule provides for maximum of 20 minutes per topic, and we have 61 speakers.
Sorry, I just happened to see that.
Okay.
Was that, oh. May I please have a motion for, for each speaker to be allocated two minutes?
Don't move.
May I have a, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Henderson. Roll call, Lupin.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Um, no.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Vela?
Yeah.
Trustee Veras?
I just want to, which is a good, I want to go for our person.
One, please turn off the mic.
Okay, whatever you have to do.
Trustee Veras?
Yes, it was yes.
Thank you.
President Buena, can I ask a question before we start with public speakers?
Yes.
I'm participating virtually, and I'm just curious as to how many public speakers do we have that came downtown and had to find parking and are in our building right now to make public comment? I just kind of wanted to explain why I voted no, because I felt like if they made the effort to be here, and I don't know how many, I can't see the audience, actually came out today to speak. But could you provide that information to us?
Approximately, I mean, we don't have a, we don't have in terms of, of in-person, and, but I will give you an approximate, approximately 20 to 25 in-person. And, and the rest, we have a total of 61 for not-on-the-agenda item and on-the-agenda item. So that proportion, approximately 35 to 38% are in-person.
Okay. I just felt like I didn't want to limit their time if they came all the way out here to make public comment. So if you could reflect that in the record, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So we're going to go, President Hoffman, sorry, I had Lupin was telling me something at the same time. What was the last component that you said?
I just wanted it to be reflected in the public record that I thought they should, because they made the effort to come all the way downtown, that I would have liked for them to have their full three minutes. I'm just explaining my vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start off with, with, I'm going to call the speakers in, because some are on a list, so people kind of know what I'm doing. They're on a list, and we just got some, some cards. So we're going to ask, yes. Oh, student trustee Martinez, sorry.
Uh, yes, trustee Buena, I have a question. I remember in previous board trustee meetings, and this was prior to on the board, we had so many people that wanted to give public comment that you actually ended up extending public comment, or not you, but the board ended up extending the public comment, or we did something where we accommodated all of the speakers because we had so many that were speaking so passionately on a topic, and I believe that's what's happening today. So is there any way that we can add another section so that we can give people more time that previously didn't finish a comment that they had? Or find a way that, in, like trustee Hoffman said, where those that, you know, made the effort to come down can ensure that they voice their complete thoughts?
Here's, here's what we've done in the last few meetings on, on the subject. We will inform folks that the two minutes is up, and we will be, we will be liberal in, in, in making sure that they feel free in completing their comment. Does that, does that meet your request?
Do we have a second public comment section at the end of this agenda? Or do we only have?
Oh, no, we only have, we only have at the beginning.
Could we possibly add another public comment section at the end before adjournment?
Student trustee Martinez, maybe I can help if I understand your question. Actually, the board has accommodated. The public speakers typically, per board, per board rule, it's 20 minutes per item. Since there are 60-something speakers, and, and they're afforded a couple of minutes each, that brings the item to about 120 minutes, if indeed all take up the two minutes. So the board has accommodated and extended the time for the discussion, albeit that the individual time is now limited to two minutes. But the extended time for the subject is, is expanded, so I think that meets your interests.
We're also being, making sure that folks are able to finish their comments without being, without being interrupted, knowing the subject matter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start off with, we're going, I'm going to call three individuals at a time, and we're going to be doing the closed session items first. I'm going to start off with Mr. Roy Payan, Juan Sombria, and Hanson Torrance. So you can, if you could please come to the front, if you could state your name, and you have two minutes, yes.
No, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Again, you have two minutes, state your name, and then I'll, I'll, I'll do three at a time, then we can. And so student trustee, I'm going with the, with the folks who are in person first, per your request as well.
May I lower my mask?
I apologize, Mr. Payan, we just.
Okay, so my name is Roy Payan. And, make sure you allow me to speak. I'm here to address the issue of, this board decided to take my case for the US Supreme Court to strike down the ADA. I find it offensive and a punk to me, not only to myself, but to the 61 million Americans with disabilities. In the, in the state of California, we have 79 million people with disabilities. In LA County, 973,000 people live here. This, this is the county that's serviced by your, your colleges. So to make a move to remove the rights of persons with disabilities, it's offensive to me. We're not asking here, I'm not asking here for any kind of favoritism. We've earned the right to, to, to have an expectation of a decent education. I don't want favoritism. I want the system to work. The, the Section 504 of the Realization Act was enacted in 1973. The IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, 1975 and ADA 1990. You had 50 years of legislation to fix the system. If this, if this institution continues to buy a system that didn't work, that's not my problem, it's yours. Start buying the systems that works, that's accessible for me. That's what we're asking for. Ignorance, indifference, and neglect is not a valid excuse for you guys to continue to, to, to take our rights away. As a person with disability, we're standing up here asking, no, not asking, demanding our rights. We're not coming to you on our knees, we're standing on our feet and proudly saying, give us our rights. Give us our education. I deserve that education, just like anybody else. I don't want favoritism. I want to go through just like anybody else. When I, when I left LACC, I left six friends behind, six friends that were still there. They're still not able to get up because they're not having the accommodations that they need. If, if a professor in a class decided, well, I don't want to accept this student because he's black, or that student because he's Muslim, or that person because he's Al-Battia. It'd be against the law, and you'd march him or fire him. But yet, that same teacher can discriminate against a person with a disability simply because they've got disability. I'm telling you right now, it's against the law. That's why we have protections like the ADA. When you make a move to take my rights away like that, that's offensive to me. You should be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payan. Mr. Sanabria?
Esteemed Board of Trustees of the LACC D, my name is Juan Diego Sanabria, and I am a United States Marine Corps Combat Veteran that proudly served in Fallujah and Ramadi, Iraq. I think it's just that God would have this moment take place on Ash Wednesday as a service of a reminder of his sense of advice to us to do unto others as we would have them do unto you. I'm standing here in representation of the millions of veterans that became disabled in the service of discrimination. Our message is simple and clear. We will not stand by idle, because evil prevails when the righteous do nothing. Our veterans have fought for this country, and we will fight, not only for our rights, but the right of every person living with disabilities. We also have members of law enforcement present in around this building, and other civil servants that could have or have become disabled in the line of duty. Service is taken for granted, but we do not. We do not do it for recognition, but for mankind as a whole. We cannot allow the LACC D to set the hands of equality back 50 years. The ADA in Section 504 Title II makes it illegal to discriminate people with disabilities, physical, cognitive, learning, mobility, speech, vision, hearing, and the list goes on. We will not stand by as these people are thrown by the wayside. We have taken our stand on this moment in history to demand that the LACC D do what is right and not pursue in taking this case to the Supreme Court. Do the right thing. I heard a lot of people talk about sending people to higher education in previous matters. How many of those people that we're pushing to get help to get into higher education were considered for their disabilities? Please, do the right thing. It's the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Terrence Hansen?
Thank you, and good, good afternoon, Board. I am here. My name is Terrence Hansen. I am the Public Policy Manager for Southern California Resource Services for Independent Living. We are an independent living center that assists people with disabilities to live in the community and improve their quality of life. You know, our, our, I like to call him the father of the disability community, Ed Roberts. He started the ILCs, and in 1990, Justin Dart signed the ADA. And like everyone was saying here previous, before me, there's been over 50 years of advocacy that has been done to, to assist people with disabilities, to just level the playing field. I started my career as a disability advocate in 2007, and we were fighting for Medicaid and IHSS services. And as much as I'm honored to be here and continue to advocate for the disability community, it does make me very sad that we're still fighting this fight on the ADA, which the ADA has, has helped so many people have that quality of life and have the accessibility necessary for them to just have a loving, level playing field. No one's asking for special treatment. We're only asking that, that we keep the ADA intact, and because an attack on the ADA is an attack on our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Ramirez?
Good afternoon, trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, and members of the executive cabinet. My name is David Ramirez. I serve as a student trustee for the Pasadena Area Community College District. I'm not here on behalf of the board of trustees for the Pasadena Area Community College District, but I'm here on behalf of all of its students, 20,000 of them, many of which live within your district. This past week, we adopted a resolution affirming our full support for the plaintiffs in the Payan versus LACC D case, and we strongly urge you to settle this case before you risk the rights of disabled students. In this semester, LACC D had 6,407 enrolled students who relied on DSPS services. In order to achieve, in order to achieve their goals, as you contemplate how you will respond in closed session, I ask, do those 6,407 students matter to you? Do their rights matter?
Thank you very much. Jenny Villar? Or is it?
Johnny.
Johnny, my apologies.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, and, eh, Rodriguez. Thank you for the opportunity to see you once again. I'm honored that you are here too much later. You discussed the thing you do, wanting to take away the rights of people with disabilities. The, the, the thing and the numbers, and the long, the, and that was happening, explaining to you. I'm not the hate to remind you that one of those typical fights advocates is really human, provided testimony in her previous meetings. The same advocacy that used to be fought to get her 13 credentials for the keynote speaker for ELAC in the fall 2022 semester. You see people with disabilities as role models and inspiration or in gold so far if you, if you act on trying to diminish our rights and our accommodations. Even I've been in the DSPS program as an intern, as a participant. I know that, I know that the resources are there. I know that they have to be adjusted and made. And really, as you change your mind and settle this case, there's no need to weed this out and make the party belong. As many of my, as many of my colleagues have said, we don't want better treatment. We don't want advancements or favoritism. We just have that we are taken, that we are given our equal opportunity. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Kawhi, Rick Scuderi, and Paul Grossman? Uh, yes?
In general, for my 11 years as a college master's professor, I have found that accommodations are not given because the faculty want to provide them, but because they're required. Accommodations are a hassle. They are time-consuming. And removing content because it is not university-accessible is discouraging. But that is true of all fights to bring equity to any disenfranchised demographic. Southern schools were not open to integration because the majorities of schools had some apathy. They opened the doors because of students of colors, they opened the doors to students of color because the military made them. LGBTQ soldiers were not accepted into the military because of a change of heart, but by threatening the careers of officers if they did not comply. The disenfranchised must be present in a community for them to be accepted. While the doors were opened by legal requirements, we no longer question whether our schools should be integrated or whether gays should be in the military. If you make ignorance a valid excuse for discrimination, you will incentivize it. Why would any faculty or staff go to training or connect with a disabled student in their class? It only opens them up to litigation rather than protect them from it. Once you open the doors for ignorance to become a valid legal excuse for inequity, that will become the cornerstone document to defend lawful bigotry. That will be your personal legacy. Whether you choose to own it or not, there is nothing you have done in the past or do in the future that will make up for the harm you will cause by moving this forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If, if you could, please always state your name completely, so we know for the record. Thank you very much.
My full name is Paul David Grossman. I'm Executive Counsel for the Association of Higher Education and Disability. Chancellor Rodriguez, Chair Buena, Member Hoffman, thank you for this opportunity, and I will be more brief than the last time. Many people will lead their whole lives without being present at a critical moment in our shared American civil rights history. But we are all, all present at such a moment right now. Nonetheless, the decision you are about to make is not a difficult one. Just listen to your student senate, to your DSS directors, to CAEPED, to a head, and over 10,000 Dredif petition signatories by a factor of four, that's a record. The whole world is watching. You will not save face or money by going to the Supreme Court. If you go and you succeed, you will still have to go back and further litigate this matter if you don't settle it, and you will still be subject to some considerable attorney fees. Moreover, our rights are worth more than your money. Do not be distracted by the technical victories that your lawyers have had. In substance, in my opinion, you have lost at every. In substance, in my opinion, you have lost at every single stage of this litigation. In motions, in bench trial, in jury trial, and before the Ninth Circuit. I hope you had a chance to click on the link that I sent you to the Ninth Circuit because frankly, you were humiliated. Do not subject yourself to further humiliation by going on to the Supreme Court. If you win in the Supreme Court, the only party you will be teaching a lesson to is yourself. If you win in the Supreme Court, institutional reform, systemic remedies will no longer be available to our community. Instead, we will be stuck one by one seeking reasonable accommodation. And if that's the system that you're going to have here, if every student who wants to turn line instead has to go to DSS just because you're not accessible, you're going to need to hire about a hundred more DSS directors. And your resources and your money that you may think you're saving instead is all going to be lost. See the light. We are all part of the same fabric. That includes people of color. That includes people of all genders. We all may be and likely will be individuals with disabilities at some point in our life. And I hope the day does not come when you need the protections of those laws and they're weak because you weaken them. Drop this hypocrisy. You cannot both tell us that you want to educate students with disabilities and care about and support students with disabilities, and at the very same time disrespect and damage their civil rights. You cannot both honor us and hold our rights hostage as a negotiation tool. The Torah teaches that one way to love God is to do justice. And that's all we are asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. David Green, Jennifer Kealan Chafing, and Aiden Curry.
Call up Paul Grossman. Good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, students, faculty, and staff of the Los Angeles Community College District, and guests. My name is Dave Green. When I'm not on a vacation day like today, I'm the Associate Dean of Services for Students with Disabilities at LA Valley College. And I'm here to address you today because I'm afraid of an action being contemplated by the board that may do irreparable harm to the rights of students with disabilities in our district and people with disabilities across the United States. It has been widely publicized that the district is considering submitting a petition of certiorari to the Supreme Court of the United States if it cannot reach a mediated settlement agreement before the March fourth deadline. Like many of the people coming before you today, I'm asking that you not do that. The mission statement of the Los Angeles Community College District speaks of fostering student success for all individuals seeking advancement and providing equitable and supportive learning environments. The district's vision statement refers to the goals of providing access and closing equity gaps. If the district moves forward with this plan to petition the Supreme Court, it will be advocating for the removal of an essential tool necessary for so many in obtaining equal access to educational opportunity. It would force our students with disabilities to address inequities on an ad hoc case by case basis rather than by institutional form. How does this help to close equity gaps or provide equitable and supportive learning environments? These actions are at odds with our own guiding principles and have the potential to permanently scar our district's reputation on how we include, educate, and support our students with disabilities. Simply put, there are other options available to you, and I implore you, find them, use them, and dispense with the concept of submitting a petition of certiorari to the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Yeah. Okay, okay. Jennifer Chafing? Aiden Curry? Ashley Rodriguez? And just because I passed someone up, if they, if you see them, they, they will still be able to speak. William Craig? And if the, if the online, let me know, Crystal, in terms of as we get to, uh, Jerry Edman? Enrique Rojel? Gary Seifra? Oh, I, I apologize. Ma'am? Oh, go ahead.
So. Uh, Gary Seifra?
Okay, great.
So.
My name is Ashley Rodriguez. Earlier today, as you might have seen, the LA Times released an article about this specific litigation. And in that article, it's very interesting, your spokesperson, William Boyer, you know, uh, said, the issue right now is whether a person should be able to sue a publicly funded entity and to profit from taxpayer money for non-intentional discrimination. It is a legal issue that even different levels of our judicial system are struggling with. I wonder how you guys let them, let them, you know, how you guys approve that? That is so bad. That is so selfish. These people are asking for basic human rights. They're not asking for taxpayer money. They're asking for changes to be made so that they can live their best lives. They're asking for accommodations to be made so they can pass classes and finish school and move on to higher education so that they can make salaries and be great members of society. And in this quote, it makes it sound like they're simply suing to get money from that is, I think, probably your perspective that you've had this whole time we've been coming up here since December. You guys, in my opinion, have not really understood what the problem is. It's that LACC D is going to take this, if you decide to, to the US Supreme Court and affect not only the students at LACC D, but all Americans in the United States. And I think it's very intentional what you guys are, how you guys are seeing it, but from my perspective, all I can do is I recommend that you do not move forward on Friday and that you settle this remediation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Crystal, I see Rafi Bilal on the, on, on Zoom. Rafi?
Son. Let me use off, sir.
Yes. Um, is this, uh, my turn?
Yeah, it, it is Rafi or Mr. Bilal?
Yes, thank you. I'm Rafat Bilal, and I'm a student with disabilities who attends, uh, higher education. Actually, Cal State University. I wanted to go and I wanted to highlight that danger is a very real danger and like ordinary people shouldn't have to be affected by this, just like both Ukrainians and Russians shouldn't have to be affected by war, by something that their institutions carried out that's supposed to represent them. I believe that LACC D should please use this money wisely in order to use the same effort to provide people with accommodations that they did in pursuing the court case. And this denying people the accommodations, their due rights, is illegal according to faith and idea. And they should have accommodations along with an IEP that are reasonable, that can help them to be where they are. And there is no such thing as disparate impact because Congress ruled again and again by law that there is no such thing as disparate impact because governments, institutions are supposed to provide accommodations regardless of whether or not it's unintentional. Because then people can use the disparate impact term under the guise of denying people with accommodations a chance at a future. This is cheating them at a chance at higher education. And I wouldn't be anywhere near I am now without accommodations, without time and a half, without a tape recorder, without note taking. And this would essentially bar people from attending education. Education is meant to be equal, for people to have equal opportunities to improve their future. And even section five oh four would require both business and governments to do things differently, regardless of what anyone intended. This is not the term of LACC D, but this is a term that their lawyers would use in order to do so. And I would urge people as educators, as teachers, please be a child's best advocate. Advocate for the students, and I don't blame LACC D as an institution. But I blame individuals who go and who do this for their own profit because this is institutionalized fascism. This is social Darwinism and from human to human, please, please do not go shut us off from the future. And I really appreciate you giving us your time or to let speak. Thank you, thank you.
Both of you have a combined of four minutes? I see that you're together?
They're not online, they expected.
Hello?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're there.
Hi, is it, uh, for Patty and Gary Seifra?
Yes, and, and you have a combined of four, of four minutes? I see that, or I saw you, you're no longer on my squares, but you're together?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, hi, I'm Patty and this is my husband Gary Seifra. Gary is a legally blind paraplegic student at Valley College. He's also an award-winning screenwriter. And we are co-treasurers of the Abilities Club at Los Angeles Valley College, which is a club that represents students with disabilities. And we'd like to, um, say that, uh, Gary has a personal assistant to help him with his studies, but many special needs students do not have that luxury. They, they don't have adequate accommodations to help them with their studies. And the legal strategy of disparate impact, we believe, is a dodge for the district's responsibilities under the law and is in fact discrimination. On behalf of the student body at Valley College, we support the blind students and Roy Pyon's efforts to get accessible educational materials. And we urge you to stop your appeal for the Pyon versus LACC D lawsuit to go to the Supreme Court, please. If the district really cares about diversity, equity, and inclusion for all, please show us through your actions of dismissing the case, and I'll turn it over to Gary.
Hello, my name is Gary Seifra. I'm co-treasurer of the Abilities Club. And I've been a student at Valley College for the past, I don't know, five or six years. And I once took a class and I cannot take notes because I'm legally blind and seriously disabled. And this, the professor, professor assigned a student to take notes for me. That was great. However, I never had, I never found it hurts. And then my, my wife came to help me. That's much better. But I wish they had like for note taking, for view, can't take notes. We have a, a class where somebody, you get a, a point or, what do you call it, for, get like three, uh, I can't really, for a class. And then that would get to do work with people who are disabled and give them to, that works with disabled people more and, uh,
We suggest that the district sit down with the students and talk with them about what would best meet their needs and accommodate them. And, uh, through the SSD offices, we've had great help through them, but we need more institutional accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the service to, to the district. Adrián González, I, I believe you're, you're here.
Can I do my cover? For the trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez. Pedro González, I'm an instructional assistant, assistant technology for Los Angeles Mission College. I urge you not to move forward with the cert, at the Supreme Court. One of the, and, and if you do, and I mean, the chances that the the Supreme Court favors you will complicate things for us for work that we do for students with disabilities. One of the things that, uh, I want to, you know, that I have concerns with is that you may look at it in, in the Spanish saying that you know, in, you know, the, in English, it translates, yes, it's cheap right now. It's only a dollar, but in the long run, it's ten dollars, right? And that's what it will come down to. It'll cost more. But this will continue to, uh, place lawsuits across the country for not receiving accommodation in a county matter. And that's what this is. I urge you not forward with this. And really, uh, a scary moment to say, but I, I, you know, but we can work this together, and that's what it comes down to, working together to make accessible universal design, training for our staff. And that's, that's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna call, uh, Yáñez and Chloe Cross, and I'm gonna call out some names, um, if, um, whether online or in Percy, per- person. Danica Gonzalez, Rusty Crum, Stephen Pearson, Johnny Hatch, Christina, um, Canarella. So if you could just prepare to come up if, if I called your name or online, Crystal, if you can let me know, uh, who's, um, and I, but I believe Chloe, Chloe and Martha are here. I have two cards? Okay.
Okay, I'm nervous. I'm gonna try and get through this. Um, my name is Chloe. I'm disabled. My mom is disabled, and so is my grandma, who is visually impaired. Since you are so interested in Women's History Month, I'll share some disabled women's history. After raising three kids on her own, she just, my grandma decided to go back to school and, and face discrimination from teachers and administrators who didn't want to provide her with the materials and accommodations she needed to access the basic education tools that her classmates were granted. She was taking control of her life and overcoming obstacles that sighted people can never comprehend. This all happened in the seventies before the ADA was passed. This is where the LACC D wants to take us back. Back in a time when people who are trying to live out their potential were denied access to do so. Even with the ADA legal protections, it's difficult to assert requests for reasonable accommodation and not be made to feel like a burden. Or be, be denied without prohibitively expensive recourse. Access to services and support that can enable our independence are restricted. When independence cannot be achieved, the burden narrative is doubled down. And even though it's imposed by poor policy and access without, even though it's imposed by poor policy and access. Without legal protections, deterrence to exclusion will cease to exist, and we will see a ripple effect of discrimination across our community. While I think it's dis- despicable to look at this solely through the lens of tax dollars, as your spokesperson implied you do, those who can't understand rights sometimes speak the language of money. If your concern is tax dollars, I advise you to consider the financial burden of not providing educational access to those seeking it. For those seeking to contribute their skills and knowledge to society and be taxpayers, which by the way, we are. Twenty-five percent of the US population are disabled, ranging in a broad economic spectrum from CEOs to people experiencing homelessness. Imagine the economic wallet of that population to see in the, to get the accommodations they need. It's twenty twenty-two. Hard fought rights should not be stripped. We are entitled to them. I fear that would, I fear what would happen if this case goes to a Supreme Court that has already shown a callous disregard for the rights of marginalized communities. Pursuing this appeal could have ramifications for disabled people across the country. It needs to end here in It needs to end here, in this room, in this city. You have the power to protect us, I demand you use it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Martha's not here, Yáñez, okay, I'm going to go down the. Okay, but that's fine, when she comes in, just let her know so we can call her up. We have Claudia Center and, and Crystal, let me know if people are raising their hands, we're on the list. Nicolas Crisoto, Brianna Kennedy, Karen Crowser, Jessica Riesta, Adam Gottneck, Hector Ramirez, Ralph Black, Jaime Pacheco Rosco. I believe I thought it was Jaime here. Okay, so let's do Nico- Nicolas, then the speaker here, Nicolas. Nicolas, you're on.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustee members. My name is Nicolas Crisoto. I was hired in October twenty twenty as the ADA Compliance Officer by the Los Angeles Community College District. Without the broad protections of the Americans with Disabilities Act, section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three as amended, and especially section five oh eight of the Rehabilitation Act, I most likely would not be part of this district. The protections and the spirit of these laws extend to students, applicants for employment, and employees. I'm a district employee, I have a disability, I am blind. What these students are speaking about, I know personally. And I know the value of having a relationship with an institution of higher education that values inclusion and provides access for everyone. I'm here to echo the pleas to your humanity that are coming from our colleagues, that you direct our public resources as a district to implementing strategies that will forward our district's mission and values. L A C C D should stand out as a leader in accessibility, diversity, equity, and inclusion. It should not stand out for tearing down the rights of anyone, especially people with disabilities. I urge you to withdraw the threat of appealing to the Supreme Court, even as a negotiating tactic. I believe I was hired in this position in part because of my experience and expertise in digital accessibility. These are skills that have come from working with individuals with disabilities, from using assistive technology that our students use as a blind person, and from advocating for organizations and individuals with disabilities to work together to benefit from the contributions that individuals with disabilities can make as employees. Much of my passion and experience comes from working with colleagues and organizations in the disability rights field, including individuals and organizations who have provided the flood of letters and public comments asking you to withdraw this legal strategy. Listen, please listen to your students, your employees, and your constituents. Don't you want to be able to count L A C C D as an organization that truly advocates for inclusion? By proceeding with this legal tactic, unfortunately, you have already damaged the reputation of this district and your own reputation, but it does not have to be too late. Please stop now, please step away from this legal tactic, it is not worth it. We can work together to make L A C C D the model of accessibility and inclusion that it can be. Accessibility barriers are created. It's not the individual with the disabilities impairments that creates the accessibility barriers. It's the content authors, the building designers, the procurement deciders. It's in their power and it's in your power to make sure that accessibility barriers don't keep our students, our employees, our in fact, our faculty members from reaching their dreams and being part of this organization. Again, I urge you to please reconsider and withdraw this legal strategy. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Los Angeles trustees. My name is Jessica Riesta and I am the statewide youth organizer for the California Foundation for Independent Living Centers. The California Foundation for Independent Living Centers is a statewide disability rights organization that serves as a membership association for California's independent living centers, which are led by and for disabled people. There are six independent living centers within L A County. For fifty years, independent living centers have been uniquely positioned to serve individuals with any type of disability across the life span. Centers assist those of age who want to live independently in the community but need tools, resources, and support to do that. Collectively, centers provide services to at least a hundred thousand people a year. As the statewide youth organizer, I have had the privilege of interacting and engaging with disabled students and youths. Disabled youth often share their educational experiences with me and those often include stories of segregation, lack of access, and discrimination. It is disheartening to know that such a fundamental part of our lives, education. It's not easy for many to seem, seemingly lift access, but especially non-disabled students and those disabled students are also often multiply marginalize. Education can and should provide opportunities for all, but much too often we see that only the fortunate get the access they need to excel and become successfully employed. Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act is the backbone of disability civil rights. It is civil rights law that has opened the doors and allowed for more inclusive opportunities for my community. We must continue to implement and expand educational access to all people today and in the future. Section five oh four ensures that educational environments are accessible to people with disabilities, people like me, that need and demand equality. L A C C D in their own statement has said that they do not discriminate. However, refusing to produce accessible material for people who are blind to have low vision is discrimination. While our state and country work to prioritize equity for people, I would expect to see L A also embracing the model and ensuring that disabled students have the access they need to, to be successful. On a personal note, I cannot tell you how important section five oh four has personally been for me. Without it, I wouldn't have completed my undergrad degree, let alone apply for graduate school. C F I O C strongly request that L A trustee support and protect the civil rights of people with disabilities by dropping the challenge of Payan versus L A C C D. And instead seek the funding needed to provide accessible materials for blind and low vision students so that they can access their free education. On behalf of C F I O C and the hundreds of disabled students in the Independent Living Network provides to support, thank you for allowing our voices to be heard.
Mr. Pacheco Rosco?
Well, I'm going to take this off, it's hard to speak again. I have to. Hello, good afternoon, my name is Martha, Martha Yáñez, I'm a student at E L A C. I'm a student of disability, minus invisible, seen externally, but I want to speak on behalf of myself and other students that I have actually spoken with and it broke my heart to hear the things that, that they were told and how they were discriminated against. And perhaps I mean, as to sit here as the Board of Trustees, maybe you're not aware of what's going on in the actual schools and what these students are being told and how they're being discriminated. The thing is that I spoke to certain students that are blind, they cannot see. If you could just fathom the idea of walking through the world without ever being able to see anything and having to navigate through this, yet they have big dreams, just because they can't see. It doesn't mean that they can't dream, they do, we do, I do. And if you were to take this to the Supreme Court and this was to be granted, all those dreams would be destroyed. I can't even imagine a world where all dreams would be destroyed, isn't that what we've been, we've been fighting for, for so long? These students were told that if they didn't like the accommodations that they had to offer, to go ahead and leave, they could go to other schools. They could find somewhere where they could actually be accommodated appropriately. That they don't have the funding for this, apparently the funding is there. I've been promised so many things, none of them have actually come to be. I don't have anything to record. A lecture, I don't have any accommodations, my accommodation was, okay, well, you could step out of the class if you need a break and come back in, but how am I supposed to know what was going on in that class? How am I supposed to keep up with the rest if, if I have to step out just to catch some air or to, you know? All these things were promised, yet none of them were ever granted. And it's just so sad, it's so sad to know that now in this day and age, that we're still having discrimination. We're living in a world where we're trying to be a part of each other, not to segregate and separate each other and fight with each other or bully each other. Please, asking you from the bottom of my heart, please do not destroy my dreams or the dreams of my fellows, my fellow student colleagues at school, please. Let us have our rights. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Jaime Pacheco Rosco. I'm the Assistant Executive Director of the City Department of Disability. Can you hear me? Sorry. I'm here today to express my dismay that the district contends that the issue right now is whether a person should be able to sue a publicly funded entity and to profit from taxpayer money for non-intentional discrimination. To suggest that personal profit is a driving factor in this case is reprehensible. This is not the issue. Rather, the issue is whether all students deserve the right to benefit from the publicly funded educational system codified in the state's constitution and whether the district will abide by its legal and moral obligations to ensure that all students can access and benefit equitably from the resources available on its college campuses. In December two thousand and seventeen, the California State Auditor prepared a report concerning the California Community Colleges' processes for monitoring technology, accessibility, and for upgrading its information technology. The report concluded that the Office of the Chancellor of the California Community Colleges failed to provide guidance to local districts on accessibility standards and that colleges failed to respond adequately and within a reasonable timeframe to the accessibility request from students with disabilities. The report notes, when students do not have equal access to instructional materials and the requests for alternate format are not addressed promptly, they do not have equal educational opportunities. The auditor states that the community colleges must abide by the provisions in the Rehabilitation Act and the Americans with Disability Act. And note that in two thousand and two, the California Legislature amended state law to require its public agency, including its community colleges, to comply with section five oh eight of the Rehabilitation Act.
I apologize, is that our system?
Who has their mic on, please turn it off.
This section requires public entities to make electronic and information technology accessible to individuals with disabilities. Yesterday, the City of Los Angeles City Council adopted a resolution supporting the civil rights of people with disabilities and opposing this district's plan to petition the U S Supreme Court. As elected members of this board, you need to decide individually and collectively whether you will ensure that individuals with disabilities have equal access to the services available on the district's campuses. I urge you to stop wasting taxpayer money to gut civil rights protection afforded under the American Disability Act and the Rehabilitation Act. Surely, in the nearly seven years since this case was first settled, the district could have done much to address these accessibility concerns in all likelihood for far less than the legal cost already incurred. Please remember, all students are entitled to profit from the publicly funded community college system. Thank you.
Thank you. What, Crystal, do we have any hands up? From people who have signed up? Okay.
Non-agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to go through the list again. Rick Scudery, Jennifer Chafing, Aiden Curry, William Craig, Jerry Edman, Enrique Rojel, Christina Cannarella, Johnny Hatch, Stephen Pearson, Danica Gonzalez, Gonzales, Rusty Crumb, Claudia Center, Brian Bree Kennedy, Karen Crowser, Adam Gottneck, Hector Ramirez, Ralph Black, Sandra Sanchez, Deborah Williams, Austin Rogers. Rusty Crumb, okay, and, and, and some folks who I think we have potentially had some confusion about timing. Then I believe there's one gentleman, but we also received comments from Connie Arnold, Alex Green, and Vicki Young, who, who sent us messages. And I want to make sure that, that, that they have been received. So we have one speaker right now. Okay, Juan Grafford? Okay, John Grafford?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees.
Good afternoon, sir.
I want to let you guys know something. Because I'm about really taking care of business down here. What you guys are doing is wrong. I'm not going to be passive, I'm not going to be passive about this. What you guys are. Thank you. What you guys are doing is wrong and you know it. And all you guys did all this time to string all of these people along. You just strung them along. You knew you weren't going to do nothing to help them out, especially me. I tried to work everything out with the OSS department. They tried to be clever in writing these accommodation requirements for me to go to this college and take classes. I'm working with the Department of Rehab, who's really putting in a good helping hand. Yet, you guys know exactly what you're doing and this is about greed and money. You got mega bucks, I know it. But you want to treat all these people like that and take away, take away all these rights that they're talking about. And everyone here has a story, especially me. And when it comes to this country, my fathers, brothers, everyone, for, for all these things. And then you guys create this like a business and look at us, all of us that's standing before you as though we are just not perfect people and put them to the side. And want to march on and make your money. And all of these other people that came up there talking of great things about Valley College and this and that. You know what, nobody said nothing about we develop a high-tech center You know what? Nobody said nothing about we develop a high-tech center to help out disabled students. We've done this for the disabled students. Nothing. All of that is marketing. And you guys are hiding behind this, knowing that we all need the help. And when it comes to the military, I'm gonna tell you something. You guys would, the military would have walked out, you guys would be holding those rifles. You would. You guys should be ashamed of yourself, what you're doing up here. Having this, we shouldn't even be in this meeting. I'm not gonna beg you because I'm gonna do the right thing, follow right along with the legal system. And I'm gonna be first in line to make sure that all of this you're doing goes down. It's ridiculous. And you know it. Just take advantage of visually impaired and blind and every other person. And when a blind student, I'm gonna speak for visually impaired, attend a class like yours. You're supposed to have everything laid out before I even enter the class. You don't have nothing laid out. Nothing. And then to have a college professor to tell me to get out of his classroom because I can't sight read music is a shame. To have a accounting teacher to tell me that you people are not capable of doing this work. You gotta be kidding me, man? But you guys are perfect people. You guys are all straight. You don't have no problems. Your family don't have no problems. Your friends don't have no problems. Where do you people come from? Where? It's time to stop all of this today. No more further. Don't try to do what you're doing for money and greed. I know you're probably hoping that my time's up, huh?
It has been.
You are, huh? I know you are. But it ain't over. If you keep pushing this, it's gonna get bad. Stop. I'm asking you. I'm not begging. I should not have to beg. I'm a U.S. citizen. I was born here in this country. I have a disability. And I even tried to join the army, knowing that I couldn't do it. Don't do this. Walk away from it.
Thank you. So I see some hands up. Are they on the list?
People that have their hand out are non-agenda items.
Okay.
Of the, the item.
Okay. Is there anyone else, um, here who is on the list or on the, on the?
I think you've already named, announced their names and they're not online.
I'm on the list.
I believe I'm on the list as well.
Same to me.
This is Rusty Crum. I'm on the list.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Can you go ahead, Crystal, and call them out? And Lupe? Give us one second, folks online.
William Craig's here for the.
William Craig? Okay. Mr. Craig, do you need additional assistance?
Think I think I got it. Can I bend this down toward me a little?
Yes, you can.
Okay, my name is William Craig, as you know. And the reason I had to show, I know I could have done this on Zoom, but it, I'm taking this thing really personal. And, uh, as you can see, you can probably see why. And I work with a disabled student as a volunteer at Valley College. I'm the president of what they call the Abilities Club, it's a charter club with the disabled. And I'm just, I'm gonna appeal to you guys because you're actually diffusing something that, um, we've been pioneering for a while. We did some research and there are, and this would really behoove you to actually, uh, abandon this pursuit of an appeal because it's gonna, it's gonna do, uh, a great deal of damage to the enrollment. I know enrollment is a key characteristic for the success of any academic institution. We've done some research. There are over one point three million disabled adults in L.A. County alone. And what's happened is we are the only demographic of people that's identified by what we can't do rather than what we can do. And me and my team were doing something called a Focus on Ability Campaign. And we're trying to inspire what we're doing. We're inspiring people in the community who are challenged with a disability to not fall prey to the stigma of what they can't do and rise to the call of the ability because we are the only people identified by what we can't do. And if we just tap into ten percent of this demographic, it'll fill all nine LACC schools up with students challenged with disabilities. And we're making a mark in this arena right now. And what this will do is it'll pause people that we're reaching out to to think that this institution isn't really out for their well-being. We're trying to, it is, it's actually, it's kind of ridiculous that we are protecting the people that the pioneers of the ADA and all of the other rights, uh, probably they pioneered to do the laws that they've set in place to protect us. We're now here trying to protect that law. It doesn't make sense. And I'm gonna tell you, it'd be more to your advantage to abandon this pursuit because it'll enable us to have the reputation we need in the community to impact this, uh, demographic so we can stop being looked at as, we wanna, we wanna pursue enhancing our ability. So that's what we're identified by. And we're gonna, for people with special needs. What's so great about you guys, though, with L.A. Valley College, I'm gonna say specifically, they are really intent on helping us achieve objectives we have to enhance our abilities. If it wasn't for Valley College, I wouldn't have had the students there in the Writer's Center to edit my book, to turn it. And I got my second book published because of, that's my book, because of the students at L.A. Valley College that helped me edit this and I didn't have to pay five hundred dollars and get this into the public. And it's just an invaluable resource for people like me who are really actually out trying to not be enabled but be empowered. And you guys could help in this regard to no end. At least it shows the heart. Because this, diffusing this disparate impact law, it doesn't just affect me. It affects, uh, doesn't just affect the disabled. It affects people of all categories who are, uh, suffering, you know, despite minorities, degenerative people and everything. It affects everything. But it'll be more to the advantage of the LACC to abandon this pursuit and look for ways to help us achieve our goal rather than try to, to hinder us any more than we are in life with, uh, enhancing our ability. So we're at def- we're not deficits. We're assets in the community. That's pretty much what I wanted to say. And if you guys will really reconsider this, it will be to your advantage. It'd be to your advantage. You have the reputation of an institution that has a heart to help people actually elevate in life as opposed to hold them down. And you could fill all the dying colleges up with people who actually need help enhancing their ability. And that's what you're in business to do. Thank you for having me. And please reconsider.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna call online Rusty Crum. Rusty Crum?
Thank you, uh, Board. Um, thank you. And good afternoon to the Los Angeles Community College Board of Trustees. I am speaking to ask you to please consider your position on taking the palin versus LACC any further through the court system and resolve this matter immediately. My name is Rusty Crum. I am a C five, C six quadriplegic since nineteen sixty-nine B.C. B.C. stands for before curb cuts, so I know firsthand the importance of fighting for what is right. I remember when there was no access for individuals with disabilities in schools, colleges, community libraries, museums, and public transportation. When it passed each other, we have Act nineteen seventy-three Title five oh four, the world came up to those with disabilities who have opportunity to participate in education, employment, H.P. activities. Sorry about that. The fight for individuals with disabilities have equal opportunity did not come easily and without sacrifices. Some of the sacrifices were made reluctantly by educational institutions to make buildings accessible. I pray that Los Angeles College District Board understands the consequences of their actions to the disabled community to continue to fight with pale versus LACC. It's a sad day when leaders in education are hell-bent and rewriting history in our own direction. I've always considered community college a path for success and a friend of those with disabilities. I hope you find it in your good conscience. So please reconsider your position and drop the case of Palin versus LACC. Thank you very much.
Bree Kennedy, Bree Kennedy and Adam Gotnak?
Good afternoon, Board and trustee members. My name is Bree Kennedy and I'm a DSPS faculty coordinator at San Diego Community College District. I'm the immediate past chair of the DSPS statewide advisory, a K-PED member, and a, an accomplice to the continued fight for diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. I am here today, joined by many across the state and nation, to address you in regards to the closed session Pay on Mason matter. As illuminated by the ten thousand-plus threat of signatures and multiple written and spoken comments today, your illegitimate legal strategy in response to this case will cause irreparable harm to the civil rights of disabilities, of people with disabilities and other marginalized communities facing discrimination forever and will reverse the hard-fought progress to the ADA. Your strategy is in opposition of the community, California Community College system-wide values and priorities. Your strategy is in opposition of your own district values and priorities. Your actions send the message to the disabled community that they don't belong at LACC. A community which, by the way, is the only marginalized community that either you or I could be a part of at any moment. Your actions say that you prioritize financial gains over social justice and equity. Your response will take civil rights progress and history in a direction that is moving backwards. Reversing civil rights should not be an issue that any of us should be here today fighting about, especially here at the largest community college institution in higher education in the state of California. These civil rights are not your rights to reverse. If the compelling stories from the students and disability activists are not enough, which they should be, then also consider the professional judgment and pleas from your own district DSPS faculty and classified professionals who advocate tire- and fight tirelessly for equal access. This action will make their mission and jobs nearly impossible. Please withdraw your intention to file for cert today. Do not leave this community living in fear for their rights for one more day, for one more moment. And lastly, as an elected member of the LACC Board of Trustees, your positions are ones of power and great privilege. In a decision, a decision that has such grave implications to marginalized communities, there should be a transparent and democratic process that occurs. I respectfully request that you post the roll call on the vote regarding this closed session issue so that the citizens may make informed decisions about representatives that prioritize social justice and educational reform in the future. Our expectation is that the Board will report back on a unanimous vote to withdraw your intention to file cert. It is not too late. Thank you.
Well, next go with Adam Gotnak, Hector Manuel Ramirez. Then after the two individuals on, uh, online, you have Sorina and, and Stefan David Simon, Simon, in that order. So the two individuals online, Adam and Hector, in that order, please.
All right. Thank you very much. Hello. Uh, my name is Adam Gotnak. I am a DSS Director. One bottom line I would share with you would be that, uh, we have to be intentional to avoid unintended discrimination. Um, I'm requesting that you please withdraw your intention to file for cert in the paying case, uh, to the Supreme Court. Much of the discrimination that exists in society today and discrimination that has occurred in the past falls under the category of disparate impact. This is discrimination that occurred even though it was not intended. Uh, we have developed laws in our country so that people cannot discriminate towards certain groups, including individuals who have disabilities. Laws like ADA and Section, Section five oh four cause us to slow down and consider the impact of our actions and our decisions. Yes, we have to be intentional to avoid unintended discrimination. Um, I want to request that you implement a democratic process in which a vote roll call is shared so that, moving forward, citizens can make an informed decision about elected Board of Trustee members who prioritize social justice and educational reform. And I have to share with you, I have, um, many, I have several family members with disabilities. I, um, I was raised, partially raised by a, a uncle, uh, who has severe physical disability. Uh, he was born in the nineteen twenties and, uh, prior to ADA and Section five oh four, uh, prior to the Civil Rights Movement. Um, and my family members carried him upstairs to get into buildings. Family members modified their own, uh, alternate, um, devices for him to, to be more independent. This is no small matter. Um, and so please, I just, uh, beg of you to withdraw the intention to file that cert in the paying case. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight.
Uh, well, I thank you. Good evening. Good afternoon. My name is Hector Ramirez. I am Shidikawa Pashi, Mexican. I am a resident here of Los Angeles County in the incited territory lands of the Tatavian Mission Band of Indians. I'm a person with a disability. I am autistic, part of hearing, and I have a psychiatric disability. Um, and I'm also, uh, somebody who's had the opportunity to utilize uh, some of the greatest educational opportunities at the Los Angeles County Community Colleges, uh, including Pierce, um, and definitely West Valley. My family and my community members have utilized services there, so I speak on behalf of them today. I am here today requesting, and I forgot to mention, I am on the Board of Directors for the National Disability Rights Network and Disability Rights California, who have also submitted uh, comments, um, in concern and asking for requests. I'm here today requesting that the Board of Trustees of the Los Angeles County College District, LACC, abandon its defense of the Pye and, uh, versus LACC and allow the upcoming March fourth petition deadline to pass without taking any action to bring this case to the United States Supreme Court. There is a risk in the LACC's further advancing this case as it could undo decades of national civil rights work done by people with disabilities. Particularly people with disabilities like myself, who have had to fight to have access to all aspects of education. Uh, particularly like the ones afforded to all students who pay tuition fees at LACC campuses and who have entered into contractual agreement based on LACC's member statements, public statements of accessibility and compliance with all state and federal laws and regulations. LACC students should not have to bear the incurred cost of having the necessary legal representation to address issues of established federal rights and responsibilities that go back decades now into the last century. As Andy Prado, Executive Director for Disability Rights California, wrote to you in a letter, please don't allow your counsel to convince you that all of the accessibility issues in the case have been addressed. They are, have not been addressed. Please don't allow your counsel to convince you that you need to appea- uh, to appeal so you can limit your attorney's fees liabilities. If you lose the Supreme Court, your attorney's fees liabilities will go up, not down, and students are the ones fronting this bill. Uh, it is very alarming that the student, student tuition has been used and has continued to be used to fund legal representation to argue against their best interests. More so that it is continued to be done in a time of pandemic where so many students are having to sacrifice and, and risk so much to try to get an accessible education on your campuses. That's not what their fees were being originally paid for. So there's a significant concern of the way that this particular lawsuit is being fun and also the consequences. As Alec Green, adjunct lecturer, uh, at Harvard Kennedy School stated in his letter to you, should you prevail in the Supreme Court, you will do so by arguing that the Americans with Disabilities Act in Section five oh four and the Rehabilitation Act do not apply to unintentionally discrimination. But shame, neglect, and isolation, those are the things that define or fishes as disabled people. And in this, in, in that society that is very discriminatory towards us. In that context, your precision is that this form of discrimination are kind of permissible. Uh, but currently, it's disturbing the fact that, you know, in reality, courts have already told you. and has informed your legal counsel that it's really, that you're a fault, you know? So just moving forward, you're pretty much just arguing that your right to discriminate is legal. You know, and there has certainly been demonstrable, you know, comments and statements saying that, you know, this was intentional, that it has to stop. I urge you to take immediate steps to stop this case and the continual use of any L A C C D funds in further efforts that might violate, and I think they violate, your safe mission and city state council, you know, contract requirements. I am somebody who went to our president and administration to ask for more funding for community colleges, but natural community colleges could bar individuals like me who have gotten an education and are still needing accessibility features. It really, really feels like a complete betrayal of having to really protect our communities, especially right now during COVID, particularly our most impacted communities. People with disabilities represent everybody with and without a disability, since any of us have the potential to develop a disability at any time in our. As somebody with a psychiatric disability, I lost my sight when I was in college as an undergraduate because of the medication, and I had to rely on the same services that these students have asked you to have accommodated. I received them and I was able to get an education all the way up to getting a PhD. No other student should have to face the type of barriers that these students that had to sue you are facing to be able to get a quality education from your institution. Thank you very much, and I urge you to do the right thing, just like the gentleman that has a sign that says that he got vaccinated and he did the right thing. This particular board needs to do the right thing and not move further. This is really alarming, very concerning, particularly in the state of California, being the home of the disability rights movements and so much more, you know, that is happening here in Los Angeles County. Thank you.
Sorina, Sorina and Stephen, who are in person.
Hello, my name is Sorina. I'm the editor in chief of the Los Angeles City College Newspaper, The Collegian. And I do have a few questions. So Chancellor Rodriguez, in LA College Promise video, you said, and I quote, "What has not changed is our dedication to you, our students, and our commitment to you to help you achieve your educational goals." You promised in that video that the district will remain committed to student success. My question is, how are you standing by those words? Mr. Bueno, the Board of Trustees governs on behalf of the citizens of the district. Your seat can often lead to an even more influential government position. But what can people expect when you are not protecting the least powerful among us? And this is for both of you. I have been trying to reach you for three weeks. I sent several emails. I have a series of questions addressed to you personally that went to William Boyer a week ago. I am still waiting for answers. On Monday, after I filed a public info request, I finally received your emails that should be on L A C C D's website, since this is a public institution and you are the heads of it. Okay, and I'm still waiting. I'm still waiting for the answers to those questions. In total, there are 15 questions. Eight of them were addressed to each director of D S P S or O S S of Student Special Services at each of the nine colleges. I did not receive any answer to any of those questions. And now, in the end, I just have one more thing. So disabled students are here, right? They're protesting during this meeting. They are the same students that you promised you will remain committed to. And they are the students, this body and this establishment. You work for us. Can you please tell us what do you have to tell to those students? Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Simon.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Stephen Simon, Executive Director of the City of Los Angeles Department on Disability. Forgive me because I hadn't intended to speak today, so I'm unscripted. I want to share a few thoughts. I know you. I sit on the LGBTQ advisory body for this district. I've sat on emergency management preparedness advisory bodies for this district. I've known four of the trustees for more than a decade since before they were elected to this board. And I assumed when I had heard about this, that your lawyers had just sort of not filled you in on what they were doing. They told you, we have to do this. It's an obligation. It's the right way. They thought they needed to defend this district and that was their job. And I reached out to every trustee I could find and we sent documents to you to explain what was really happening. And you still persist. I'm an attorney, by the way. So, you know, the notion that you could continue this action, understanding its ramifications for the people in this room and across the nation is unacceptable. And I say that in my private and in my professional capacity. I would ask you, I'm a black man, and if a black person sued this district for race discrimination, would you try to erase the Civil Rights Act so you wouldn't have to admit black folks? If a female employee sued you for unequal pay, would you try to enshrine the rules of the land to be unequal pay is fine? I don't know where to go with this. If a native Spanish speaker or Tagalog or Swahili speaker said, "I need you to invest money in making sure my language is incorporated here," would you say, "No, let's go to Supreme Court, make English the law of the land"? No, you wouldn't. You're better people than that. But the people in this room, their rights are disposable? I don't know where to go with this. I have no logical response to you. You need to formally, legally tell your attorneys to stop this. It is completely unacceptable and you need to apologize publicly to people with disabilities and taxpayers across Los Angeles whose money you are required to use to make your programs, facilities, and services accessible. You are required to do that with taxpayer money. It is not an excuse for what you're doing now. Please, my department, I will gladly put any resources I have to help you work on your short term and long term accessibility plan. Let's do this together. I sit where you do. I sit in the giant city that's not accessible enough. It's hard to make it accessible enough. These are the people to work with to get there and I'm glad to help you. Thank you.
Crystal, do we have folks online who are on the list? I don't recognize the names for. Okay, can you call them? Their font is extra small.
Dr. Bueno, these are for the non-adjunct items, not the paying case.
Okay, so are there any other hands on the Payon matter?
No.
Okay, I'll, for the folks here, I promise I will call. I just want to, I'm doing the assessment on the Zoom side. On the Zoom side, we're good? Okay, so the folks online, in person, if you wanted to come up, the next person, I think there is one person right here and one person over here. Ma'am? Who was here had their hand up to speak? If you could just say your name. And the next person who was on this side, if you could just prepare as well. Thank you.
President Bueno, you still have a couple of hands on Zoom in case you haven't seen.
We're monitoring trustee Hoffman and we're trying to figure out who is Payon and then who is from the other matter.
Right. I see a couple of Payon hands because I recognize the names, just.
Okay, if you, if you, if you see them and you recognize a name, could you text Crystal, please, or Lupin?
I will do that.
I really appreciate your help on that. Thank you. Thank you.
My name, my name is Elizabeth Prager. I spoke last month. I'm here again and I came in person. I took the day off of work. I'm an L A C C employee. And you know what? I'm not scared of you remembering me. I know there are members. I know there are people who are afraid to speak out because you all are the governing body. You control the money. You control this lawsuit. In addition to being an employee, I am a union member. I sit on my e-board. I'm in closed, closed session meetings with our lawyers. And we decide where those lawyers go. It's not the lawyers that get to decide what they do with the case. It's you. And I want to look you in the eye, especially you, Francisco. I came to that seventh annual disability summit and I listened to your keynote speech. I was there and it was like sand in my mouth, listening to you talk. You spoke about this school being a D E I A institution with pride, pride. This is an accessible campus. How? How is this accessible? How? How can you with pride look me in the eye and go, yes, yes, I stand before you. And I am here committed to accessibility. You can't. You can't. And you know what? What you are doing, what you have pursued with your eyes open. This is the thing. This is why it crushes us. It's not through ignorance, right? We just heard from your colleague, from a lawyer, you know where this leads. You know what the Supreme Court is right now. We've seen it change. Your lawyers want this Supreme Court. 10 years ago, this wouldn't have been your legal strategy. It wouldn't have worked. Right now, this legal strategy has a shot. It has an actual shot. And you know what? Even if, even if you're like, no, 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 we're just going to file this and then we're going to force Payon to settle for less money and then we're going to take it back. That's not how this works. That's not how this works. You do not play with people's lives in this way. And I'm looking at all of you. Look, every single one of you, you walk out, you cross the street wrong, you're disabled. You make a wrong left turn, you're disabled. You get in a car with a driver who is perfectly sober, the other driver is not sober, you are disabled. And I know, I know everyone in this room, even if you're not disabled. You know a mom with an autistic kid? Someone in your family uses a walker? Someone in your family needs a wheelchair? How? How can you pursue this? I just need you to sit with your own conscience. Because you have a choice. You have already caused harm. You have already caused deep harm. What you can do now is at least stop, at least.
There was one more speaker on this side.
Hi, good afternoon. I was not prepared to get up here today, so I just wanted to get up and say a couple of things. I'm a student. My name is Annette and I'm a student at L A C C D. I myself am third generation person with a disability. My mother's a polio survivor. My 16 year old son is on an honor roll match. Manages his visual perception disability that affects his memory. So without his accommodations, he would not be law school bound and planning for college at this time and rolling over to Valley with a Section 504 as we speak into enrollment. But I'm not up here to talk about myself. I actually got to know our plaintiff, Portia Mason, over the weekend. And I just need you to know something. You need to know that she dropped her class Monday, this Monday, because she doesn't have her books. You know, we're in week four. Without my accommodations, I would not be standing here. I owe everything to good counseling. There's some good people out there still. But if I could get my accommodations in order, why can't she? She had to drop her class on Monday. She does not have her book. That's not fair. You cannot stand there or sit there and tell me that she did not have the rights, the same rights that I do. I just, that's the only reason I had to stand up here today. I just, I urge you to settle and give your disability students what we need. It's a human right. It's beyond a civil right. And as a parent and somebody myself who really struggles, I am begging you. I pray to God that none of you ever experience children or grandchildren with special needs. I have a cousin with cerebral palsy child who is six years old. If you don't know what that looks like, please Google it. I urge you to really, really consider your decision because you're affecting lives. I have to quit. I will quit. I will not be transferring if you make this decision. And how is Portia Mason ever going to get through school if you don't help her? If you don't help her, who will? That's all I wanted to say today.
We have the names related to this matter.
Claudia Center is online.
Excuse me?
Claudia Center.
Claudia, oh, Claudia Center. Go ahead, Ms. Center.
Hi, this is Claudia Center. I'm the Legal Director of Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund, and I have a disability myself that was very symptomatic during undergraduate and law school. And I relate very much to the students in this case. I, like Steve Simon and other people who've spoken today, really thought that if we communicated with the Board of Trustees, if we explained how we could resolve the concerns that were being raised by individual members of the Board of Trustees. You know, if you need more appropriations to fix your technology, we'll support you in that. If you need us to go demand from Oracle that they fix your educational platform, we will be there. We will get a meeting with Oracle and we will make them fix that platform. There's an issue with your unions. There's a way to work that out. You can wait for the next contract. You can work with the lawyers to figure out a way to deal with that. I've heard people talking about $10 to $20 million in attorney's fees. I know that's not correct. That's not the scope of attorney's fees that are in play here. You know, I think you can, you can pay the attorney's fees if you need to. You know, if there's technology that's out of date, that can't be fixed, the judge already said that you all can do a workaround, for example, for the library databases. There is a solution to every problem that you all are throwing up other than to try to trash our civil rights in the Supreme Court. I really thought like Steve Simon said, that if we just spoke to you all, that this would be a misunderstanding and that we would figure out a way forward together. And then today I read in the L A Times that my community is being described as trying to profit off our profit through enforcement of the A D A and Section 504. I mean, it's just so disrespectful and insulting that I am disgusted and I don't even know where to go. So I really am glad that the other members of my community are here today because otherwise I would just feel bereft. I at least have the other members of the community here in solidarity and that's all I want to say.
Next is Sandra Sanchez.
Sandra Sanchez?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My name is Sandra Sanchez. I am the student body president at Los Angeles Valley College. My job consists of making sure that all students feel safe and welcome on campus. I am here to support the Abilities Club and to urge the board not to send the Payon versus L A C C D lawsuit to the Supreme Court. Instead, we ask the board to consider spending the money that was allocated for the case to invest in places that can support our students with disabilities. I know you will listen to our students when they demand and advise you to take action against moving forward with the case as it only will harm already existing A D A rights. I stand with them as their community is a crucial part of our diversity at the Los Angeles Community College District. On behalf of the student body, we urge you to stop the case from going any further as there are no reasons for the Payon versus L A C C D case to continue. If the district really cares about equity and inclusion for all, please show us the actions of dismissing the case. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I apologize. What's the name?
Kyrie Me. She's online.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kyrie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much.
I appreciate being here. I just, I'm a student, a disabled student. I'm fifty years old and I'm trying to survive life. Being in college as a disabled student, I have support behind me that keeps me going on a daily basis. And I just ask that you please consider that people are people. Disabilities do not make people less smart. These are our civil and human rights and taking those things away is discrimination. And the L A C C D must stop holding disability rights hostage. Do not do it for one more day. Withdraw your intention to file for cert to the Supreme Court today. In addition, I request a transparent democratic process in which vote, roll call is shared, so that moving forward, citizens can make an informed decision about elected Board of Trustee members who prioritize social justice and educational reform. I'd just like to say thank you for having me. Have a good day.
Next is R A D Regan. You're on.
Is that me?
Perfect.
Thank you. Give me one second. Good afternoon, Board President, well known Chancellor Rodriguez, board members and guests. My name is Paul Medina. I'm a director with the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, the official voice of two million students. As a Region Seven representative of California Community Colleges in the Los Angeles area, including all nine colleges in the L A C C D, I'm here to voice the Student Senate's support and solidarity with the rights of students with disabilities in the Payon versus L A C C D lawsuit. The absence of accommodation for students with disabilities is an evident to the student's success, regardless of intentionality or unintentionality. Therefore, we are against L A C C D's persistence in cutting disability rights in the American with Disabilities Act. If L A C C D is successful, the U S Supreme Court will rule that the ADA and section five oh four do not prohibit disparate impact or unintentional discrimination. But this is very often how disability discrimination happens. The prohibition on this kind of discrimination is at the heart of the ADA and section five oh four. On December seventeen, twenty twenty one, L A C C D reaffirmed its commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and access for all and fully supports the American with Disabilities Act. Implementing equity works beyond words and empty promises. It is a commitment to ensure policies and practices are inclusive to students. The Student Senate urges the L A C C D Board of Trustees to comply with the ADA to ensure learning is inclusive to students with disabilities and fulfill the system's vision for success, which calls for our institutions to close equity gaps. Quote, "The mission of the Los Angeles Community College District is to foster student success for all individuals seeking advancement by providing equitable and supportive learning environments at our colleges." Also on December seventeen, twenty twenty one, in response to the concerns of the disability community about the case, this Board of Trustees issued a statement that the L A C C D is quote, "committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and access for all," end quote, "fully supports the American with Disabilities Act." But these words are meaningless as the trustees continue to pursue the dangerous threat to use the U S Supreme Court to weaken the rights of people with disabilities, including blind and visually impaired students who attend the L A C C D and face barriers in classroom materials, textbooks, educational platforms, and websites. The L A C C D is a leader in quality education for countless students. It is unfortunate that some students are created disenfranchised, not able to achieve their academic goals and dreams. The Student Senate for California Community Colleges Board of Directors calls on you to follow through with the L A C C D mission statement and cease and desist pursuing this lawsuit to the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Black. Ralph Black.
Ralph Black, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Ralph Black. I wanted to make a couple of points concurring with other speakers. First of all, I've been blind and been an advocate for disability rights for several decades. I'm now a member of the Board of Directors of Disability Rights California. And in my personal experience and all the many people with disabilities that I've known, it's very rare, if ever, that you encounter a situation where somebody intentionally discriminates on the basis of disability. It's almost always because people are unprepared, aren't willing to spend the money, or simply don't care to make the changes that are necessary to accommodate people with disabilities. So narrowing the scope of the federal non-discrimination laws to make the law ignore the idea of unintentional discrimination would effectively eliminate all protections that people with disabilities have. Secondly, I would say that some twenty years ago, during the time that I was serving as general counsel for the State Chancellor's Office, we reached a system-wide settlement with the Office for Civil Rights. And as part of that agreement, the system committed to making sure that all print and electronic materials were accessible for students with disabilities. And the state provided millions of dollars to all districts to provide the resources to ensure that that commitment was met. I don't know what happened, why that didn't work out in the particular circumstances of this case, whether it was a problem with district support or at the college, or maybe with just individual faculty members. But we have had a commitment to that policy and there's no reason in this day and age why that should be happening. And finally, I would just say that as the lawyer, I understand why your attorneys are advising you to use every possible argument, regardless of the consequences. But your responsibility as policymakers is to direct them to use arguments that will protect your district, but without doing undue harm to the policies that you are committed to and that are of benefit to the people that you serve. Thank you.
Who's the next speaker?
Jennifer. Jennifer Chaffin.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jennifer Kealan Chafens. And on March twelfth, nineteen ninety, at just eight years old, I, along with many other disability activists, left my wheelchair to protest the stalling of the passage of the ADA. This protest is now known as the Capitol Crawl. And I was willing to take all night, if I had to, to crawl up those eighty plus steps to show Congress why it was important to pass the ADA without any further weakening amendments. Literally, my blood, sweat, and tears are on those Capitol steps. And four months later, the ADA was signed into law. And I and my family worked diligently with people like the late Senator John McCain and Justin Dart Jr. and the task force to see that people with disabilities have full and equal rights to all areas of society. Today, thirty-two years later, I am still a passionate advocate of the ADA and its full implementation and purpose to assure the civil rights of people with disabilities. In President Bush's ADA signing ceremony speech, he said, "The ADA is a dramatic renewal, not only for those with disabilities, but for all of us. Because along with the precious, precious privilege of being an American comes the sacred duty that every other American's rights are also guaranteed. Together, we must remove the physical barriers that we have created and the social barriers that we have accepted. For ours will never truly be a prosperous nation until all within it prosper. If the Board of Trustees continue to petition the Payon versus the L A C C D case to the United States Supreme Court, it will be yet another attempt to weaken the ADA in section five oh four. It would have eviscerating effects on the ADA and its true purpose with negative consequences that would reach across the country in regards to education, housing, employment for people with disabilities. I am demanding that the Board of Trustees stop their efforts to undermine the ADA in section five oh four protections. I did the Capitol Crawl to represent my generation and future generations of kids with disabilities. And if you continue on this path, you will be putting a barrier in our way. I am willing to make that claim again. And as I said thirty-two years ago, I will take all night if I have to."
Christina?
Hi, thank you, everybody. Bear with me, I'm at L A Valley College. I stepped outside of class for this. So I, I first want to thank all of you for giving us the time that we need to share about this critical issue. As you know, I spoke a couple of weeks ago with my son Johnny. And I'm back here today. You know, for, for allowing you to give us the time to speak says a lot about you as a board and partly why we are all so taken back by the fact that you still have not put a stop to moving this case forward. Trustee Hoffman, I voted for you. I voted for you because I believed in what you said when you were running to sit on the Board of Trustees. You stand, you say, you stand as a, for a defender and advocate for women's causes. Many of you are from underrepresented communities who sit on the board. You know what it is like to be discriminated against. You know what it is like to hold people accountable, to try to have people understand that you have equal rights like everyone else does. Last time I spoke, I forgot to mention the solution. Because I don't just complain about the problem, but I offer solutions so we can work together. And instead of wasting more millions of dollars from taxpayers' money, including myself, all of you, and everyone else who pays taxes here, instead of wasting more millions of dollars on moving this case to the Supreme Court, I suggest that you invest in a solution that will bring about positive change and create a Department of Digital Accessibility that would include disability accessibility. And this department would directly work and support faculty in ensuring that their classwork, any books that they write, any curriculum, it's all fully accessible. I have always instilled in both of my sons, as a single mother, that there are ripple effects to what we choose to do in life. Hopefully, the ripple effects leave a positive impact on our fellow human beings. But sometimes, as we all know, people's choices can have a very detrimental impact on others. We have desperately tried to make you understand the magnitude of your decision if you were to vote to move this forward to the Supreme Court. In my opinion, with all the knowledge that you've heard now for many months and here today from some many profound speakers, if you make the decision and choose to move this case forward to the Supreme Court, you are voting to intentionally discriminate against people with disabilities to start. But then, as that ripple effect continues and other disparate impact cases would come to the Supreme Court for women, gender, people of color, sexuality, which they will come if this goes to the Supreme Court and is ruled in favor of. It's just a stepping stone. Other marginalized communities who have disparate impact as a protection for their rights, it will be just a matter of time before they are gravely impacted by your decision that each one of you make. You are all informed of what potentially could happen. So you will all be remembered for the decision you choose to make regarding this case. You have a responsibility. Please think deeply about your actions, what they will do to the civil rights of all of us who have been discriminated against for one reason or another, whether it's race, ethnicity, gender, sexuality, or disability. You were all elected to this board and have a responsibility to represent the best interests of students like myself, my son, and many others here that access L A C C D campuses. You are here to improve the lives of L A County residents by providing access to quality higher education. So please do what we elected you to do and vote no and do not move this case forward to the Supreme Court. I have one thing Johnny wanted to share. He is in class. He was on the list of sharing and I will play it for you. It's very brief. Give me one second. That he typed up. Okay.
Please listen closely to this. We chose to have you represent us. So please do your job. Thank you.
And then this is what he wanted to play.
Power to, you know, anybody knows that the people have the power. All we have to do is awaken the power in the people. The people are unaware. It's like they're not educated to realize that they have power. They put the politicians in power. They vote for the local mayor. The people do it. But the system is so geared that everybody believes that just the father will fix everything. The father being the government. Government will fix everything. It is all government's fault, you know, bad shaky fist of the government. Well, we are the government. The people are the government. The people have the power, but we must try and make them aware of this.
So we do, we have the power. We put you in office, so we need you to do what we asked you to do and what we put you there to do. Thank you for your time.
Aiden Curry.
Excuse me?
We have one, Aiden Curry.
Aiden?
Hello. I'm a proud autistic person and I was kicked out of basic algebra when I was in like eighth grade. And for not being able to add numbers together quickly enough because of my disability. And flash forward to today, I am now a Dean's List mathematics major and I am currently just doing undergraduate research in algebra. And see, I thought that I was broken for quite a while, but really if until I realized that for all the work that I put into trying to learn to function in the neurotypical system, my teachers never put the slightest of effort into trying to understand the way I think or make themselves compatible with my system. And so frankly, it seems, frankly, I, I don't. It is extremely insulting to me that you that unintentionally discriminating is your moral standard. And you, I think you able-bodied people are wasting valuable, unique talent and valuable perspectives by forcing pure disabilities to drag themselves up steps when you could be putting your able-bodied privilege to work, building some ramps so you can have new perspectives and yes. That's all.
Jasmine?
Hi, good evening, everyone and trustees. Thank you for allowing.
Thank you for allowing students to speak. My name is Jasmine Prasad. I'm the Vice President of Legislative Affairs for the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. And I am here speaking as a student who does have learning disabilities. And it's very concerning that L A C C D, one of the biggest community college districts in the state, is not listening to their students who they're supposed to be promoting an education for and ensuring that they are graduating, getting the credentials that they need. As a student with learning disabilities, it's extremely hard to be in a learning aspect, especially if you do not have the accommodations you need. I would not even be in college if my college administration did not provide me those resources, let alone in high school. There is oftentimes, as a student, I wanted to give up just because my disabilities did get in the way. And for an administration not to be caring for their students is very concerning. And I have had heard many times that the administration here is saying that they don't have enough funding for those resources to students. As somebody who works on the legislative side and closely with the budget and watching it, I do know for a fact that with the pandemic, a lot of money was allocated to administrations, more money with more population of students to make sure that they have the resources to continue their education during the pandemic. So hearing that as an excuse is very disheartening. And we should be making sure that every student has the resources they need to continue their education. And as members of the board, you should be ensuring that is happening because you're supposed to be working for the students and not the other way around. They're not asking for a big change, they just want rights and accessibility to resources to help them promote their education and ensure that they can get the degree that they want. This is very huge for L A C C D, considering that, once again, you guys are the biggest district and you are the role models for a lot of community college districts, since you are so huge and make a huge impact to all the districts across the state. So please, we urge you to rethink the consideration of the legality issues that you are presenting and do not appeal to the Supreme Court because you are hurting students not in the state but nationwide, and it is very concerning. And we also request that there is a roll call vote so we know which trustees are truly trying to benefit the students and ensure that they do have an equitable and access to higher education. Thank you.
I believe for right now, that's it for the call session.
Excuse me?
Speakers on the pay-in case.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, we, this is it for the call session, the eight, five item?
Okay, got it.
For now, yes.
All right, thank you very much. We're now going to move on to matters not on the agenda. I'm going to call on the items, we have twenty-seven speakers on that item. We're going to first start with Janet Clark, Dr. Daryl Good, and Mr. Henry Washington. One I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the audience here physically speaking on matters not on the agenda? Okay, then we're going to go fully online. Janet Clark, Daryl Good, Henry Washington, Richard Chave, Leila Menzies, Carl Hillbrandt. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Board members and Chancellor Rodriguez. My name is Janet Clark. I am a member of the Los Angeles Southwest College Community Coalition. Our request is to ask you to order an investigation into whether or not there has been a violation of the United States Communications Decency Act at Los Angeles Southwest College. In December twenty-twenty-one, you received a packet from the Coalition. Therein, you learned that Dr. Awon, President of L.A. Southwest College, sent out a digital newsletter called the Cougar Connection with a link to a music video shot on campus that can only be described as pornographic. Pornography defined is any display of sexual activity that shows naked people having sex. Dr. Awon sent this clearly pornographic link to the L.A. Southwest faculty, staff, students, and the community. Adversely, the video was potentially available to underage youth in attendance at the Early Education Center, Charter High School, Middle College, which may include students working within the college campus itself. When you click on the link of the video, shot at L.A. Southwest College Football Stadium and in its fieldhouse, you see rapper and singer Little Nas X locking eyes with another football player. The two meet in the locker room where they begin to kiss and remove their clothing. Later, they have sex in the shower with the camera panning to Little Nas X, who rips open a condom with his teeth. After the sex scene in the shower, Little Nas X goes to the other man's house with flowers, only to find out that his sex partner is married with a child. Little Nas then drives home, Little Nas X, want to make that distinction, then drives home, gets drunk, and throws and breaks beer bottles against the wall. The video ends with him walking down a church aisle in tears. The video shot at Southwest College isn't the only controversial video that Little Nas X has produced. He has also generated controversy because of a previous video that depicts him lap dancing and having sex with Satan. Please understand how upsetting this video is to the community and to the L.A. Southwest College student workers who have confirmed that they also have received the Cougar Connection newsletter. The Communications Decency Act prohibits certain communications and internet use to transmit pornography. Thus, I reiterate, our ask is that U.S. trustees conduct a district investigation before we are forced to report this matter to the Federal Trade Commission. Dr. Awon is the president of L.A. Southwest College. As president, Dr. Awon is the face of the college. Her visibility in the thumbnail photo, her statements in the Cougar Connection, and subsequent writings regarding this matter indicates her immense pride in endorsing this video. The L.A. Southwest Community Coalition is extremely concerned, and I reiterate and ask, you order and conduct a formal investigation into whether or not there has been a violation of the United States Communications Decency Act at L.A. Southwest College before we are forced to report this matter to the Federal Trade Commission. I will now turn over the podium to Daryl Good, Southwest Regional Director of the N double A C P.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez. Chancellor, we've reached out to your office a few days ago because our concerns of, let's just talk about the elephant in the room of white supremacy and how that has been institutionalized between white privilege, white access, and also gives those licensing, a license who are not African-American to use white supremacist concepts against folks of color, particularly African-Americans. We have some challenges that we've been made aware of that the president, you've heard, Southwest has created an environment that is hostile to both African-American faculty and, and staff. And we think it's prudent that you investigate it. Given what you just heard about the video, it looks apparently what our concern is that she also had a gang sign. Now, she's not African-American, but African-Americans and Latinos, countless lives have been lost with gang signs. And that's those who are not in our culture, take a license, exploit that. Trying to be cool is unacceptable. This is something you need to do. The district has a propensity of not being sensitive to African-American community. Chancellor Rodriguez, in two thousand twenty, you offered eighty thousand dollars to African-American organizations in the middle of summer to help L.A. Community College District to recruit black youth who you failed to do in the fall in their senior years. So you have black organizations come forward trying to do a job that should have been done months earlier. And with the, and they take the blame or take the pressure off you for the college is not doing their job. So we're concerned about how many councils you have. There's some concerns about credit, non-credit. You need to have a very, a program that has credit that services the community. You're responsible to that community to offer courses in academic rigor so that youth in that community could have an opportunity to success. It appears to, that has not been done. Hopefully, we can meet with you, Chancellor, because those are very serious concerns. And the counseling ratio, being out there having African-Americans relate to African-American youth in your feeder schools. We know several years ago, colleges, San Marcos, one of them, removed the boundaries, but you still have an obligation to go in those feeder schools in your area. And we need to see the data. As A C P, as the area director, we have sixteen branches. We're all looking at L.A. Community Colleges now. President Biden reminded us how important community colleges are. But historically, community colleges in California is seventy-seven percent full-time and part-time white, same data that was in late sixties and seventies. We know that there's a institutional racial bias that preserves those numbers, given the population has changed. We look forward to talking with you and meeting the board. We're bringing other community organizations which do support us in finding out how you can better serve the African-American community. This is our position as F, N A C P. We state, new president, we have new leadership. They're also supportive of our disposition. And the sixteen branches in the rest look forward to meeting with you soon. Thank you. I'm going to now introduce Henry Washington, retired coach of, former coach of Southwest College, I believe. Thank you.
Good evening to all of the board members. Again, I'm Henry Washington. I spent thirty-five years at Los Angeles Southwest College as a physical education instructor, kinesiology, and thirty-five years as the head football coach and thirty years as athletic director. The L.A. Southwest College Community Coalition has asked me to come here and speak about the present situation as far as football at Southwest College. And as you all know, there was no football in twenty-twenty because of COVID. Very few teams have played. But twenty-twenty-one, we were back, the football was back on course. And Southwest didn't have enough football players to play. And as of now, in their football classes, only twelve students out to play football, and it looks like they're not going to play again this year. And I'm here to say that we have a person that is our football coach. He's a good person, but he's not the person for Southwest. We need someone that's going to get out into the community, going to visit our high schools and actively recruit our young men to come to Southwest. Just not going to show up on our doorstep just because we're there. We have many colleges that are within traveling distance to us and, and we have to get out and actively recruit these young men to come and play football. And if we don't do that, we're going to be without football again. Our present coach is a good person, I'll, I'll keep repeating that. I really like the man, but he is not out beating the bushes, doing what it takes to create a program. Our young men are not just at the college for football. These are students that are enrolled in twelve units and it, it helps enrollment, it helps everything. So we, we need someone that's going to get out and do what it takes to make sure we have a viable football team at Southwest. Thanks for your time.
Richard Chave, Leila Menzies, Carl Hillbrandt.
Rich, Richard Chave here. Thank you so much for, for letting me speak. I am here to just give public comment on a non-agenda item. Today, I'm giving public comment, I'm advocating for the preservation of Old Trapper's Lodge at Pierce College, the life's work of John N., a partially paralyzed artist who lived with his disability and created California State Landmark number nine-three-nine-point-five. Of course, for thirty years, many decades before the A D, ADA was enacted. And I'm coming you on the day that you are considering what to do with Payam V. L A C C D. So what I'm asking at the Old Trapper's Lodge Folk Art Environment at Pierce College, I'm asking the trustees to stop the clock. I have been in touch with Rolf Schleicher, who is the Vice President of Administrative Services, who is working on decommissioning this folk art environment. I am asking to stop the clock. I have reached out to Council District Three, Los Angeles City Council District Three, Bob Blumenfeld's office to help with Pierce College put a request for proposals together to preserve and figure out a long-term plan for preserving this important folk art environment. I would like to see the, the board show any work you've done on this, other than last April twenty-twenty-one. I saw that there were some minutes on getting the, the environment, the folk art environment appraised. And I would just like to see this slowed down, stop, and let local groups who have a good track record with stewardship and care about folk art environments, Watts Towers is another great folk art environment, saved by the same man who saved Trapper's Lodge. I'd like to see them be able to come in and really solve this problem properly. I do not feel Pierce College at this moment is on a good path with their deaccession plan. Thank you so much.
For the speakers coming up, if you could please, on your, on your own, time yourself with the two, with the two minutes. It's a little complicated on our side since we're remote. Thank you. Leila Menzies?
So I'm asking that Carrie Hildebrandt speak, and then I speak after her. We're speaking about one issue. Can you please recognize Carrie?
Carrie, are you on?
I'm here, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, I'll start my timer and do my best. First of all, hi, good afternoon, and thank you for serving as trustees and listening to everyone who really wants your ear so patiently. And I appreciate the opportunity as well. My name, as you saw, is Carrie Hildebrandt. I was a Faithful West employee for more than twenty-five years, provisional clerk typist, administrative assistant, then faculty, and finally, community services manager. And I have served longer, but for some unexpected personal reasons, I retired. Though I do now serve on the Board of One O S Partners. So I need your help. I filed a claim that I believe should come to you soon. And to be clear, legal action is not my preference. I was unsuccessful in resolving the issue before I retired and told my only option was to file the tort claim. I'm asking to be properly compensated for work I did during my last years at West for benefit of the college and district. My situation is unique. My immediate supervisor, Associate Dean Barry Sloan, retired in the twenty-seventeen SRP. I was asked to take on his duties while performing, you know, continuing to perform my community services manager's duties. After about a month of performing two jobs, I requested temporary reassignment as per Article seven B three of the Teamsters Dean's Contract. And the VP of Academic Affairs verified my master's degree and asked for my resume. When no reassignment came through, I followed up, was informed of a delay due to discussion of definitions of the various levels of deans. And I could see this was indeed taking place. But every time I checked, the issue was not yet resolved. Still, there were numerous indications I would be appointed interim in the appropriate classification when there was resolution. So I faithfully continued to do the work for the benefit of the programs, the people involved in them, the college and the district. When the classification finally published, I reached out to my supervisor who When the classification finally published, I reached out to my supervisor, who reached out to District HR regarding what to do, especially in light of my pending retirement. And HR determined that appointing me a dean would be difficult and getting it resolved in that timeframe would be difficult and said they were exploring alternatives. And then almost as soon as I retired, district sent an official letter reiterating that they couldn't appoint me a dean, which was not what I had really asked for in S anyway. But they also didn't address any other possible solutions. So it is possible. There was confusion because my supervisor and I used the Dean Reclassification Survey as a tool to organize my duties and budgets as they related to the dean classifications. I noted that in my initial communications with HR, but that fact probably got lost at some point. No one has disputed that I did the work. The issue is how to compensate me. So I'm asking that you review the details of my claim with an eye to creating a solution. I'm glad to supply all correspondence with the district and answer any questions. Thank you. I went over a little bit, sorry.
I believe there was someone else connected to this.
Good afternoon, trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez. This is Leila Menzies. I'm a retired LA CCD employee and the CMA Classified Management Association President Emeritus. You have heard what Carrie has just told you of the inequity she experienced in terms of her pay rate in her last years. She was a very dedicated LA CCD employee who continued to perform an extremely difficult task by hand jobs and waiting patiently to be classified as an interim dean. She relied upon the college's assurances that they were working to do this and that they were simply blocked from doing this while the dean's contract specifics were being negotiated. As soon as the dean's contract issues were resolved, she again immediately sought to get her situation resolved, contacting both Personnel Commission and HR. And all through this effort, the CMA also acted to support in resolving this pay inequity. Sadly, this did not happen. I have been an employee at the district for nearly thirty years and now retired almost five. And I have always found that the district and management strive to do the right thing, even when there's not a simple or a straightforward way to do so. So I now feel to correct this injustice as surely morally, ethically, you would not object to correcting. Please find a way to correct this. Please look at all the possible ways to resolve this so Carrie can be paid appropriately. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people that I'm going to tee up are Carl Hildebrandt, Joanne Haywood, Rowena Smith. If you can, after I call you, if you can unmute yourself and please time yourself for two minutes. Thank you. Oh, Carrie, Joanne Haywood, Rowena Smith, and Christine Ayazian.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. Thank you for the second opportunities to speak this time regarding the testimonial on behalf of one of our colleagues and AFT fifteen twenty-one A member. The staff guild, before I begin, the staff guild acknowledges the importance of disability rights and equity. And we are speaking to the Board for Equity as well. I'm presenting this testimonial on behalf of a member. I live paycheck to paycheck. The inability to not have enough money to help my family, my grandchildren is frustrating. A fair salary increase would allow me to take care of my family. We love what we do and those we serve. We are nothing without them. I've been with the district for twenty-four years. Sometimes we work with the hardest hit populations. We can't be good to others if our employee is not good to us. We relate with the population we serve because we are that population, fighting for fairness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rowena Smith?
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like to acknowledge the importance of disability rights and equality as well as equity, especially as that's the same premise that I'm basing my plea to you today upon. Good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members and guests. And thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Rowena Smith Crusaint, and I am here today to share my heart with you. First, as a member of AFT fifteen twenty-one A Classified Staff Guild, as well as the interim second vice president. It is with a heavy heart that I write this testimony because I never, in my wildest dreams, back when I began at LACC as a bright-eyed student who fell in love with education and came to believe that the LACC, LACC was the educational equivalent to a real-life version of the Emerald City of Oz. I never would have believed that now, twenty-plus years later, after making the choice to build my life career in student services for LACC, my educational home, think that we'd be at this dark crossroad. And it's very sad and it's heavy on my heart. Never would I have thought or believed that the LACC would allow their very own to be living paycheck to paycheck, even though that's happening. How is that happening? We, an institution that's built on the promise of a better life through higher education. We who say that our guiding principle is equity and upward mobility for all. Yet sadly, here and now at this juncture, that's not the case. Instead, LACC has left their very own classified soldiers alone to die on the financial battlefield. And it's continuing to ignore the many years of dedicated service, the many years of going above and beyond the call of our classified duty that seemingly, and so sadly now, feels as though it was for naught. Board of Trustees, you're our last hope. And it's with a cry from our collective hearts and souls and a last glimmer of hope that we beseech you to do what you do best. Stand up for the underdogs. Stand up for your classified soldiers. Show us and the world in your actions, what you have told us in your words, that we matter, that we're valued, that we're appreciated. Show us that you won't leave us behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine, then Yovanna, then Fausto De La Torre. So Christine?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Christine Ayvazian. I'm the treasurer for AFT fifteen twenty-one A. And I'm here to read a testimonial on behalf of one of our members. Our member writes, receiving a fair salary, personally for me, it would not change much, but it would provide me with more security. I feel that an increase in salary would be a clear statement that the work done is valued a little more than just paying lip service. During the past year, when we were asked to go online, much of that transition was made possible because of the skill set and willingness of our members. Although I'm currently not at the top of the scale, I would welcome future opportunities to move up in the ladder. I feel that the Board of Trustees needs to only listen to the words of Chancellor Rodriguez during the last year, when he was speaking about the way the colleges were able to transform themselves to a fully functional online environment. And since the Board of Trustees is like an extended arm of the chancellor, they need to hold the proverbial pen and allow his words to truly mean something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ivan Fausto, then Monica Castillo. Ms. Campos?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. The AFT College Staff Guild acknowledges the importance of disability rights and equity. We are speaking to the Board for Equity as well. My name is Yovanna Campos, and I am currently the interim secretary for the AFT College Staff Guild Local fifteen twenty-one A. I am reading a testimonial from one of my members. Our member writes, because we don't make a living wage, affording rent and other necessities has become increasingly difficult. The prospects of ever owning a home seem impossible. I would like to have the ability to have some breathing space to finally save money, save money and reduce my financial stress. Classified staff are at the front lines of every campus. We adapted and made each of our offices accessible when we began working remotely. We have been back on campus risking our health before faculty who are paid more than three times our salary. Administration speaks on equity, but it is not practiced when it comes to the people you employ. The implied bias that comes with the assumed education completed between faculty and staff is appalling. It is only made worse by the embarrassing amount offered in differentials that we don't have. My experience, as I'm sure as many others, has always been one of stress and sacrifice when it comes to filling in gaps left by those who are comfortably paid more. Faculty demand accommodations and are approved to work from home while we are left to cover for them. It is exhausting and frankly, quite discouraging that the district is not supporting us more. I work with students with disabilities and have worked with admissions in the past. The work and effort put into the student services can be the difference between someone dropping out and continuing. That is not recognized enough. I don't believe it is known how impactful each classified person is in the giant web of LACC. I don't believe they recognize the impact made in education nor in the support given to faculty in our administration. We are the foundation of LACC. Please show us respect and pay us what we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. De La Torre Fausto, then Monica Castillo, then Vazrick Caribbean. Okay, Monica Castillo.
Good afternoon, and I would also like to acknowledge disability rights, equality and equity as we all need these things, including your classified staff. My name is Monica Castillo, and I'm going to be speaking about my situation. And you're going to hear a little bit more about me than you probably would like to, to hear. But I think you need to hear these things because we're real people. We're not just numbers behind, you know, on, on a sheet. We are real people. I've been an employee at LA Trade Tech for almost twenty years now, and I am struggling. Some of you on the board may know me or have seen me with the Chancellor's Advisory Committee on LGBTQIA+ Affairs. But you do not know this. You do not know that I'm struggling. I am living paycheck to paycheck. Rent on my small apartment is half of my take-home pay, half. I have a parent loan that I pay on that takes over one-third of what is remaining after I pay my rent. Before the pandemic, I had three hundred dollars in savings. That's it. Because I don't make enough to try to save or to be able to save because I'm barely making ends meet. And once the COVID forbearance is over, I will be back to only having two to two hundred and fifty dollars a month for groceries and gas for my car after paying bills. And I'm talking about necessary bills. I'm not talking about extras. I don't even have a credit card. I mean, I don't even use a credit card. I have it for backups, but I don't even use that. My apartment lease is up at the end of the year, and I am going to have to move because my rent is going up. I am terrified. I'm scared because I really don't know what's going to happen to me or where I'm going to go. It is likely, I, I mean, I would be so happy to move into a modular home on a mobile home park, but I will likely be moving back home with one of my parents. I'm fifty-four years old. I've worked for this district for almost twenty years, and I've put my heart and soul into what I do for our students. I should be looking forward to retirement or paying off an actual home, not moving back in with my parents or looking for a second job to help me pay for the necessities that a paycheck from almost twenty years with a district doesn't cover. We classify, we're your front lines, and many of us are struggling hard. I'm just one story. It is hurtful to us to see that there's enough money for job notices for, for employment that make two to three times our salaries, two to three times my salaries, when we are just trying to make ends meet from month to month, paycheck to paycheck. Please, please support your classified staff. We deserve and we need better. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Andrea Edwards, Vazrick Caribbean.
Thank you. I would like to also acknowledge the importance of the disability rights and matters of equity, equity as we speak on matters of equity as well. So good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrea Edwards, and I'm here as a member of AFT fifteen twenty-one A to read a testimonial from one of our members. Higher gas prices alone have impacted our resources. My partner is in school, and I'm responsible for my three-person household. A living wage would mean everything. We proved that even during the pandemic, we get the job done and take care of our students, faculty and departments. I could continue my education and give my daughter more extracurricular activities, but at last, I have to provide basic necessities first. We are loyal and hardworking. Most of us have been here a long time and have produced during times of change. And now even during a pandemic, we transitioned to working from home without notice. And now transition back to our on-campus jobs while a pandemic is still going on. And with the additional stress of the fear of infection. Without us, the campus does not function. Yes, we are a team, and everyone has a valuable role. But classified keep this campus alive, and with our hard-working, consistent presence. We beseech you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vera Tilasek. Abraham Horowitz, Anthony Alvarez.
This is Yara Wazania.
Vera, you're, you're on. You can come back on.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Good evening, everybody, Board of Trustees. I'm here, Board of Trustees, audience, my colleagues of fifteen twenty-one A. I have been a full-time. Can you get back to me because I'm having a double sound. Can the next person go or can I go out?
Sure. Abraham Horowitz, Anthony Alvarez, Kayana Chisom.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, Chancellor, Board of Trustees. I want to start by, of course, also saying I stand in solidarity with our disabled brothers and sisters. I'm a disabled veteran myself, so it speaks to my heart what they're going through. My name is Abraham Horowitz. And I'm here to speak on behalf of one of our AFT fifteen twenty-one A members. She writes, as a single parent of two with a single income, I feel trapped. I can't move out of my parents' house because I can't afford a decent place for my kids and I. I don't want to move too far away from my parents or my job. My kids feel stressed. We want to, we're cramped in one bedroom. They don't move. They don't have space of their own, and we live with six other adults here. I'm not poor enough to qualify for state programs. I don't make enough to pay for everything myself. A living wage would mean security for me and my kids. I'd be able to afford the basics for me and my family, housing, food, clothes, and have leftover for entertainment and savings. I would move out on my own and have a place, a home for my kids and I. We are dedicated to our jobs in a way that we give our health, life and soul to our work. We go above and beyond. Some of us are than what is expected. Some of us are overqualified for some of the, some of these positions. We have stayed at our positions for many years beyond the last step and have accumulated. and have accumulated years of experience without being compensated for it. And to top it off, we can't move up in the corporate ladder. There are so many blocks for us that we are just trapped in our posts, not being able to move, afraid to lose our jobs or go elsewhere. I think the Board of Trustees thinks that what we do is what is written on our job descriptions. But we do so much more than that. That other assigned duties includes far too much for what we get paid for, and you don't seem to take that into consideration. You don't seem to know that some of us are probably no more as classified staff than our supervisors who get paid more as our administrators. That we can probably run the office better than our bosses. You don't seem to know how much we struggle with poor planned processes or running programs we use every day that we have to deal with and the stress we deal with that some of our supervisors are not being efficient as we need to be as they need to be to get the job done. Yet we are expected to produce no matter what, and in the end, we always do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Horowitz. Lupi, has Fausto Delatorre gone? Have we called on Fausto Delatorre? Okay.
I can just see who's in the room.
Okay, so next we have Vazrick Caribbean. Okay, Anthony Alvarez. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members, and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Anthony Alvarez. I'm out of Harvard College. And I'm here to read a testimonial for one of our AFT 1521 members. Our member writes the following. "The increase in cost of living has caused, at times, for me to live paycheck to paycheck and not being able to get out of debt and student loans. It has caused me to postpone having more children and purchasing our family home, barely making ends meet, even being a two-income family. Getting paid a living wage would move us towards owning a family home and continued to complete my higher education degrees, growing my family, closing the debt, having a savings or college fund. It would free me from credit card debt, and I would be able to invest in my child's education and afford childcare. Cost of living, especially in Los Angeles, has dramatically increased. We can barely make it month to month, even with two-income households. We need to be able to afford living now, but also have a savings nest for the future as cost of living will only continue to increase." Sorry about that. Our salary needs to increase with inflation. It only economically makes sense. We, the Unit One members, motivate and encourage students to pursue advanced skills and knowledge. We guide them from the beginning and make sure they are successful in their educational career. We walk them through the entire process of becoming an LACC D student to graduating. We provide our students with the utmost support to improve their lives. We're the pillars of the district and student services. Our salary should not be a plateau. Salary should increase with experience and years and dedication. A yearly raise only makes sense. It will promote further dedication and commitment to the position. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Kiana Chisholm, then Marilyn Ingram, then Natalie Embry. Are any of those speakers on crystal?
No, they're not.
Yes.
Oh.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members, and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Marilyn Ingram, and I'm here to read a testimonial from one of our AFT 1521A members. Our member writes, "Just a couple of years ago, I had to choose between buying a used car or getting an apartment for me and my two kids and move out of my parents' one room that me and my kids share. I had to pick the car to be able to take me to work. I still haven't been able to move out. Cost of living in Los Angeles County is too expensive. I live 20 miles from where I work at Southwest. A living wage for me means that I can sustain my two kids and I without help of my parents or anyone else's help. It means that I can provide the essentials to them, such as housing, transportation, clothing, food, and also entertainment. It also means that I can save for one day to buy a house or a new car. Living wage means living, not a struggling wage, not a stressed-out wage, not should I buy food or gas wage. It means living, thriving, growing. I would be able to get an apartment for my kids and I. I would be able to save money, live peacefully without stress, be more happy at work. I want the Board of Trustees to know that it is not fair how we are being treated and that we are not being compensated fairly for what we do. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Natalie Embry. I'll call again.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members, and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Natalie Embry, and I'm here to read a testimonial from one of our AFT 1521A members and to make comments myself. Our member writes, "My name is Michael J. Griggs, and I am currently an active AFT 1521A member working for Los Angeles Mission College in the Student Services Division. My current classification is Student Services Aid. I obtained classified employment after five attempts taking the Super C exam. Having had the opportunity to be associated with the district for 12 years in various capacities has allowed me to witness the work that is asked of and carried out by my AFT 1521A unit. During many of his communications in the past year, Chancellor Rodriguez referred to the seamless way we adapted to an online format and maintained high levels of service, even in the face of a global pandemic. Much of this work fell on the shoulders of the members of AFT 1521A, and those individuals have proven to be valuable members of the district community. Now that we are sitting at the table, it is my hope that we remember the words conveyed by the chancellor and come to an agreement that demonstrates district's frontline workers' commitment has not only been met with words, but also with thankful actions. Thank you from Michael. On a personal note, I'm an instructional assistant at LACC, and I'm currently serving our members as Staff Guild Chapter Chair at LACC. I've worked in community colleges in California for 18 years, and I have a lot of student loans. Approximately a third of my take-home pay goes to my student loans, which means I am unable to afford rent to live near my campus. I drive 500 miles a week to get to and from the job that I love, and it was $84 to my gas tank last night, which I do twice a week. Our staff guild at AFT 1521A deserve a living wage in Los Angeles. Obviously, this is an extremely expensive place to live, and our members need a fair salary increase to be able to do our jobs and stay healthy. I'm a person with an invisible disability, and the necessary five-hour commute to and from my job with LACC D contributed to nearly breaking my hip at age 32. And it continues to contribute to health problems, both mental and physical, that I struggle with today. I'd love to move closer to my campus and become a taxpayer in LA County, but change in compensation and commute assistance would be required to make that dream possible. I stand in solidarity with those with disabilities and join the previous speakers expressing extreme concern about the choices made regarding the Pion case. Please allow us to do our jobs and thrive in life without discrimination and disregard. Thank you."
The next few speakers, Stephanie Amaya Tarward Thompson, Elizabeth Prager.
Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, and guests. My name is Stephanie Amaya, and I'm a classified employee. I'm an alumnus, and I'm also AFT 1521A member. I'm here today to ask the Board of Trustees for a living salary for our union members. We believe that equity starts at home. Our union members are the frontline workers of the nine community colleges. We are the union that day in and day out create innovative processes to help our students navigate during the pandemic. We are the union directly involved in the registration process and enrollment efforts. We are the key pieces that make this work happen. Ideas are great, but we put the work into fruition. As you all know, prices in Los Angeles have affected all of us. I, as a millennial, can tell you that every time we are ready to venture on our own, we are hit with another economic crisis. This year, when minimum wage increased to $15 an hour, it put all of us in a dilemma. When $15 an hour is a minimum wage, everything gets bumped up in price. Gas prices are at an all-time high. Our union is asking for stability. We ask for a livable paycheck to afford food and housing. If I receive a fair salary, I would be able to afford to return to school. Returning to school means having to look for childcare, and that seems impossible with the prices here in Los Angeles. We deserve a raise because we are going through a pandemic, because all of you are for equity, and because this pandemic has added tons and tons of emotional labor. This is not including the fact that we are understaffed and offering online services. Our community needs us to be there for them, and we need the Board of Trustees to be there for us. Thank you for this time."
Thank you very much. Tara Ward Thompson. Elizabeth Prager. Oh, Tara.
Tara, you can unmute yourself.
All right, sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tara Ward Thompson. I'm the Chapter Chair of LA Mission College, and I'm here to read a testimonial from one of our AFT 1521 members. Our member writes, "Not making a living wage, I am now using my credit cards because salary isn't enough to pay for my family's expenses. If we were getting paid a living wage, I would not have to use my credit cards where I have to pay interest. I would have peace of mind that I'm able to afford the necessities my household needs without having to use my credit cards. The commitment 1521A employees show to the work we do, the district, our students, is comparable, incomparable. We go above and beyond on a daily basis. The work we do is seen within our community, not just at the campus we work. We assist not only students, but the general public as well. I enjoy the work that I do, assisting students from the first day they step on campus, not knowing what they want to do in life with their educational goal, to the day they graduate with their AA degree or certificate. Thank you."
Elizabeth Prager.
May Kiana Chisholm go, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members, and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Kiana Chisholm, and I'm from Harvard College. And I'm here to read a testimonial from one of our AFT 1521A members. Our member writes, "The increased cost of living has caused our rent, water, electricity, everything to go up. We have to opt out of certain groceries because they are too expensive. Our family is not driving new cars or spending carelessly. Still, it is difficult to make ends meet. My family had hoped to one day purchase a home. That no longer seems attainable when we struggle just to pay rent. Being able to make a living wage, which would mean a peace of mind and less stress, a chance at a better life for my family, the very things that our students look for. Right now, at the end of the month, there is no, excuse me, there is not much left over for savings. With our current salaries, we will reach a point where it will be near impossible to keep up with inflation. How can LACC D talk about equity and not practice it with its very own employees? We live and work in these communities. We work day in and day out for the opportunity we love. We are not asking for a handout. Classified staff is comprised of community members, former students, student workers, and disproportionately impacted groups. Please remember, classified staff in the AFT 1521A Guild showed up for LACC D during the pandemic, and we were the first to return to campus and risk our lives and our families' lives to support LACC D. Now, we are asking LACC D to show up for us. Please do better, LACC D, and thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Prager.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, thank you. I'm here addressing you all again. I'm a part-time member, and I actually was a student at LACC. So, when you talk about the students and their ability to get access to education and to just sort of grow, live, blah, 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 that was me. My family is first generation, so I paid for school. I don't know how, y'all. Then I transferred. I got into debt. I did not necessarily make the best decisions, but I got my degrees and I got this job, and it's in my field and it is with my education. And then, as an employee, I got my master's, and now I find myself going to food banks. So, like, and also, also, let's just be honest. Every single member, you are an elected member. I know how much money you make. That's public record. I make $25,000 a year. You want to tell me that that's okay? It's not. It's not. So, like, I just don't understand. I just don't understand. Like, you're in such a position of privilege and power, and what you do with that privilege and power, it doesn't look good to me. So, just do the right thing. That's all.
Thank you. I'm going to call on the last six speakers are Fausto de la Torre, Vera Tilzek, Jolene Martin, Edith Garneca, Tiffany Jackson, and Lydia Lee. Oh, Vera, yeah, Vera Tilzek.
Vera, unmute yourself. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, members, guests, my colleagues. My name is Vera Turecha, and I worked at Los Angeles City College for 31 years, then became 12 years. I'm an alumnus. I graduated from City College, and I was a student. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I'm here as a member of 1521A to read a testimonial for one of our members. It is hard to say, it is hard to stay afloat and make sure you have enough money for the two weeks before a next paycheck. Having a living wage would mean I wouldn't have to stick nails or do anything. I can make my gas last as many days as possible. We choose to work for the district. We've been blessed, but it doesn't mean we aren't still struggling. We all want to give our families what they want, but it's hard to say no because we are having to actively save money to make ends meet. The work we do is long-lasting. I only wanted to work for the district after many classified staff members helped me through my years at East and encouraged me to continue to fight and join the district. It is some of the most rewarding work one can do. We do not only do the jobs on our job details. We become someone who many students depend on to come back for encouragement. We are not paid counselors and are often told many stories that can be weighing on us mentally. Sometimes, some have taken home or carry it with us and then break down from the weight. We get paid to do one thing, but we end up doing so much more, and students appreciate the work knowing we don't get paid for that. I've been here 31 years, and I'd just like to share, I was that student worker that was encouraged to actually fill out an application, and I was referred to by office administration to join LACC D 31 years ago in academic affairs. So, I'm honored that I have. So I'm honored that I have worked here for thirty-one years, but it's so sad to hear the stories from my colleagues, the student workers, who don't have enough money to actually fit. My experience I had with one of my colleagues could not afford a Thanksgiving dinner. But I used to do a lot of volunteering, and I actually donated a whole Thanksgiving dinner to her family. It was very sad, and I told her, please don't be embarrassed. We help each other and we help students. Please consider to give us our call and influence, and we don't get the chance and opportunities to do that. And also, I back up my brothers and sisters with the ADA issue that you have. I, myself, have underlying health conditions that are not seen, and I too need support. Medical conditions that have been denied, and that's a whole other story. So, board and everybody else in the audience, thank you very much for speaking.
Thank you. Fausto de la Torre, Jolene, Edith Garnica, Tiffany, Layda.
Jolena, mute yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was up next. First of all, I just want to say that I stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters with disabilities, and I support their concerns. My name is Jolene Martin, and I'm a counselor at Los Angeles Trade Technical College, and I'm here to share my experiences and some of the concerns brought to me by students and colleagues. We had a hundred and sixty-six faculty members sign a petition regarding safety, operations, and infrastructure issues. Here at Trade Tech, there seems to be a pattern where we bring up concerns, and the response time from administration is slower, slow, or ignored. Then ironically, they sent out a campus survey trying to figure out how they can boost morale. Sorry. Yeah, they sent out a campus survey trying to figure out how they can boost morale. In our department, we had to take action because the response from administration was slow and subpar when returning to campus in winter and currently. There is no proper sanitation done in our area. We just recently started getting our trash taken out on a daily basis. In our counseling center, we're dealing with a fire alarm that goes off all day, every day. It's a safety hazard that could be deadly if there was a real fire because we're so desensitized by the sound of the fire alarm. What is further concerning is that I've been told by an electrician from campus that the building was not ready for occupancy, so it's very tricky to fix these types of issues. Another example of mismanagement is my experience with our assessment center. Due to lack of planning resulting in leaving, due to lack of planning, leaving some students without English or math placements and prerequisite requests being ignored because there's no one there to respond to those emails. If you look at our campus climate survey, it is apparent that faculty and staff lack confidence in the vision of our leadership to increase student enrollment and ensure student success. As you can see, administrators are not prioritizing our work environment nor student enrollment. However, what they do prioritize is replacing a VP with a questionable reputation without any transparency on how or why this placement occurred. How are things being prioritized? I've seen our faculty appropriately identify concerns and solutions, take them through the chain of command, only to receive no validation or response. We need effective leadership and accountability from our administration team. Thank you.
You, Edith Garnica, Tiffany Jackson.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak, and I'm a culinary arts instructor for the Culinary Pathway, and I want to report to you the state of our building. Our building is a dump, pretty much. Have you been to one of the worst restaurants?
What's your name, ma'am?
Edith Garnica Diaz.
Okay.
And it's basically, if you've ever been to one of the worst restaurants of your life, it has no toilet paper most of the time, the restrooms aren't clean. It's a sanitation and safety hazard. We are understaffed, we need more custodians. Faculty has not been replaced since they retired over three years, and we also lack the support of classified staff. So it's really... Our morale is very low, the lowest it has been in about, what, fifteen years that I've been at Trade Tech. And what can I tell you? I can just tell you that if I were you, I'd be considering really stopping by unannounced so you can check the place out on your own. Our new building also has a lot of issues with the equipment that they put in. Our walk-in refrigerators are still not working properly. They're constantly shut down. There are still procedures that are not in place, and all of that creates a lot of stress, unnecessary stress on our students. So we're not able to teach properly. Students have walked out of class, and many of them have made comments to me directly and other instructors that they thought that school was supposed to be different, and that we're not expecting to deal with the situations of not having toilet paper, paper towels, and a clean sanitary restroom. So that's one of the things that, well, it's a lot of things. It's not only one thing, but it's happening throughout the campus, just not just at the culinary department, but the culinary department is one of the newest buildings, and it's already, it's already infested with roaches, and we have a lot of issues with that. What is the administration planning to do to combat the morale? I mean, we don't know. They never say anything about it. It's like, we need action. We have many ideas, but we need collaborative action now. We're tired of just waiting and waiting, and I'm afraid that the warranty will be running out of most of this equipment, and we'll end up with a broken building that we paid, you know, the citizens paid forty-eight million dollars for. So I ask for your help to please help us find someone to collaborate with us and take action now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tiffany Jackson.
Mute yourself, Tiffany.
Oh.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez. I also want to talk about the campus climate. When we came back to school, we were all very excited. We are one of the few schools and departments that are set up exactly like the fashion industry. I am a teacher. I teach industrial sewing, pattern-making, and clothing construction. And to return to campus, it was as if time stood still. We returned to rooms that had not been cleaned. They were exactly the way they were left, you know, fifteen months prior. The elevators were not working. Many of us had to have people come and help us move things up and down the stairs. My classroom personally is on the third floor. We were rewarded a lot of donations, brand-new machinery, dress forms, equipment that's still on the first floor because the elevators don't work and we're not able to move them upstairs, and it's frustrating. The students see all that equipment, and we want to use it. We want to use all of the things that we have been gifted. It's important that we can maintain and update our curriculum to be current with the industry, and we can't use these things because the elevator doesn't work. The elevator has not worked more than it has worked. So not only the passenger elevator is out, our freight elevator is out. I have a student on crutches. I'm on the third floor. He has to climb three flights of stairs every day to get to his classroom. We have issues with the restrooms. We're one of the few programs that start at seven AM. I can't tell you how many times I've gone down and asked him to unlock the bathrooms, and the students are asking me, these are basic things, elevator working, bathroom, what's going on, why can't it be fixed? We keep asking why. We've had meetings, we've done grievances, we've done petitions, and still, nothing. You know, we are in the second semester. School will be over soon, and nothing has changed since, basically, when we came back. So we are all doing the best we can. We are a very hands-on discipline. We all share tables, machinery, equipment. We were told there was going to be sanitation every day when we came back. I've never seen any type of sanitation. I've asked, what does that protocol even look like? It's never been explained to me. So the students are concerned. I don't even have a late policy anymore on work because people are in and out so much with being ill. So we're frustrated, we're tired, we are kind of at our wits' end. We don't know what else to do besides meetings, grievances, petitions. So we want to know whether the next steps, how are you going to help us resolve all of these issues? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lydia Lay.
One second, let me turn on my camera. And I'm still kind of have students coming and going. So first of all, my name is Lydia Lay. I'm the department chair for cosmetology, skin therapy, and barbering, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like Tiffany said, cosmetology was excited to come back. We were so excited because we like being in the classrooms with our students. We love helping, and, you know, we expected some setbacks, but not as many as we've had this time. Tiffany touched on a lot of issues, and so did Edith. You know, it's like as if time stood still. Nothing was done, the rooms were filthy. I took, I've taken tons of pictures. And as we've continued this semester, the sanitation issue hasn't changed much until recently. Then we have the lack of clerical support and no point of contact for our students. And, you know, we talk a lot about enrollment, and this directly impacts enrollment and student learning and the processing of state board documents for license here for our students, and that's one of the reasons why they're here. We've had backorder issues with cosmetology and barbering kits, and while we understand the pandemic's impact on global supply, communication has been poor. And let me say this again, communication has been poor. I want you to know that our faculty is adaptable. We know how to move from one thing to the next, but there's a lot of divisiveness and other issues. In our department, they've had students, and they've had us in limbo. People who are supposed to be doing their jobs are not doing their jobs, and no one is holding anybody accountable. Instead, we are being gas-lamped, yes, gas-lamped, and we are being told that this issue seems to be personal. Meanwhile, our students have become discouraged, and they don't have assistance. Sometimes in the lab, there isn't, like we said, the clerical support, and they're frustrated. And, you know, trying to, you know, keep students and seeing them all the way to graduation and, you know, completions and A degrees and all that, and how are we supposed to retain students? We too, you know, like I said, well, sanitation is talked about. But, you know, I just feel that, oh, one more thing. We, you know, the cosmetology department, we've got an entire year with towels. I mean, the years will be over before we know it. How does a cosmetology department go without towels? Again, divisiveness. So, you know, I talked a lot about how students feel frustrated. I get emails all the time. But for the first time, I've seen the morale hit an all-time low in our department. Oh, I didn't, I thought my camera was on. I saw our department hit an all-time low. And, you know, we've been going strong together as a team, making a lot of things happen, but it was really sad this week. It feels depressing at times. I've seen my colleagues be upset, at times cry. And we're asking you to help. We're asking you to please listen. We're here to do a job. I think teaching at trade and all, most of our campuses, you know, it takes a special type of instructor to come in and help the students and want to see them complete and really be there, but it's, all of these issues has made it really difficult to do that. So I just, I want help. And I remember the chancellor at the open house came to me, and he's, we had a great conversation, and he said, "Échale ganas." I've done that. Ya le eché ganas. Y no pasa nada bueno. Nada bueno ha pasado para nosotros. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Fausto de la Torre on? Okay, is there, I think we've gone through the list of speakers. Okay. No other speakers?
We have handbrays on the other side, but they didn't sign up to speak. We don't know their topic or why they're raising their hands.
Okay, all right, we're going to move on to... Let's see, we've got matters on the agenda, reports from standing committees. We're going to move on. So President, I'm the President, Vice President Vella. Are you there, Vice President Vella?
Yes, I'm here. Unfortunately, if you could go to the other trustees, I have a technical issue right now.
Okay, when you're able to come on, just come on board in order to go on through the Public Affairs Committee and some of the other committees. Trustee Hoffman, could you please summarize the findings of the Finance Committee that you chaired on February 16th?
Yes, I can. Hang on, let me just pull this up. I have some notes. We had our meeting on the 16th, and we looked at the audits from the firms of KPMG and Vazquez, and they both made a presentation to the committee on the financial statements of the Los Angeles Community College District as the year ending June 30th, 2021, which includes the single audit and the state compliance audit. KPMG also presented the statements of bond expenditures and propositions A, double A, and measures J and measure C, C for the year ending June 30th, 2021. The financial statements also included the single audit and the bond expenditure statements all received an un-modified opinion, and that's a good thing. And the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval audits to the full board, which are on the agenda today, I believe. The committee was also presented with the second quarter projection report, the 311-Q, which projects $156 million ending balance, and a copy of the 311-Q that was submitted to the State Chancellor's Office is on the agenda today as an information item only. The committee also received and reviewed the HIRF balances as of January 24th, 2022, and discussed the district's plans to request extensions, and I believe we decided that that discussion would be a standing item at the Budget Committee meeting. So thank you, that is my report.
Thank you very much. Trustee Vella, would you like to go, or do you still need more time?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do the report. So I am reporting out on the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee on behalf of now Assembly Member Mike Fong. So as usual, we have our weekly meetings with our legislative team and advocates. However, on Wednesday, February 16th, we went ahead and convened the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee. In particular, we were going over our Washington DC visits in early February. We had successful visits with Undersecretary of Education James Cobal, Senator Alex Padilla, Congressional Hispanic Chair Raul Ruiz, Representative Tony Cardenas, Representative Judy Chu, Adam Schiff, as well as Representative Nanette Barrigan. We went ahead and also spoke about the America Competes Act. The bill is made up of several previous proposals, and that is on STEM for education and training in the field of STEM. In particular, the House recently passed this bill along party lines, and we're looking forward for that to be implemented. Again, that's the America Competes Act. In the state, we are monitoring various bills. In particular, we're looking at some of our priority bills, AB 75, which is a K-14 school bond, AB 102, Holden, which is dual enrollment. We're also looking at AB 1187, Assembly Member Erwin for California Community College Tutoring, Assembly Bill 1655, Joan Sawyer, Juneteenth State Holiday, we're supporting that. We're also supporting AB 1756, which is the Medina Bill on Cal Grant Reform, as well as Senate Bill 22, the Glazer Bill for T-Gate to higher-ed facilities as well. So we're also looking at AB 1505, Full-Time Faculty Obligation Bill. Bill, AB 1705, Matriculation, and SB 874. In in particular, you know, we have been very successful in working together with our local advocates, in particular, going over partnerships with our local cities, the City of Los Angeles, LAUSD, to promote enrollment opportunities in particular. And so that has also been extremely successful as we move on. And I had given also the direction to Ms. Veloz to continue to work with our cities we serve in order for them to know that we're here, we're available. And so that's also going extremely successful. So that's it for the Public Affairs and Legislative Committee report.
Trustee Anderson, could you please summarize the proceedings of the IESS Committee on February 16, please?
Thank you, President Buena. Happy Women's History Month, everyone. The Committee for Institutional Effectiveness and Student Success met on February 16 with trustees Moreno and Vella, Vares, I'm sorry, in attendance. The committee received a presentation on the West LA College Enrollment, Recruitment, and Marketing Plan by President James Limbaugh and Vice Presidents Jeff Archibald and Roberto Gonzalez. Vice Chancellor Carmen Lids gave an update on the District Information Technology System Authentication, which highlighted the recommendations from the National Institute of Standards and Technology focusing on new authentication requirements for Office 365, such as the importance of multi-factor authentication and strengthening passwords. And last, Vice Chancellor Ryan Corner and Dr. Murray Pearl addressed the request made at the January meeting to determine what, if any, effect the decline in LACC enrollment has had on statewide enrollment trends. The next IESS Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 16 at 4:00 PM. And, Mr. President, so ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson, except you have one more. On the on the Chancellor's Advisory Committee on Black African-American Student Affairs, you chaired on February 3.
Yes. So the Black and African-American Advisory Committee met on February 3. I would like to again thank the Vice Chancellor Ruben Smith, LA College President, LA Southwest College President Sahira Wan, Trade Tech President Katrina Vanderwood, and Pierce College Intern President Ara Aguar for joining us. Because the committee focuses on Black and African-American student success, we welcome LA City College student Kenneth Allen Callahan and LA Trade Tech student Wendell Jenkins, who shared their LACC experiences at their colleges and offer suggestions to us as to how the college and thus the Board of Trustees could improve the implementation of student support services. Mr. Jenkins also shared upcoming Black History Month events being hosted by LA Trade Tech, Dr. Natalina Montero from East LA College, Dr. Maisha Jones from LA Southwest College, and Dr. Thelma Day from LA City College also shared Black History Month events being hosted at their respective colleges. And Dr. Kalinda McLean shared some citywide events from the Umoja Program Student Collective. And our AAOI Coordinator, Dr. Nairi Berry, provided an update on the incorporation of student ambassadors to address African-American student enrollment and addressing the needs of justice-involved students and community members, noting that the district's attention to racial capitalism and the lack of generational wealth can in large part be addressed by LACC academic and workforce program offerings. Ms. Maria Veloz provided a legislative and government affairs update, and the chancellor provided district updates regarding LA Metro passes and her funding for students. And I am very pleased to announce that in coordination with trustee David Vella, the Black and African-American Student Advisory Committee will be meeting jointly with the LGBTQIA+ Advisory Committee in the very near future to discuss the intersectionality of our students and how the two committees can and should work together moving forward to appropriately address student needs. Thank you, Mr. President. So ends my report.
Thank you very much. Student trustee Martinez, please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee that you chaired on February 11.
Thank you, President Buena. So firstly, I'd like to start off my report by thanking trustee Hoffman for being in attendance at our last Student Affairs Committee meeting. Trustee Hoffman came, and she shared some of the amazing things that she's currently working on. And she also went into detail about some of the amazing work the Women's Caucus is doing. We also had Lieutenant Brian Jones come in and share some de-escalation shop tactics with us. So I'm actually planning a de-escalation workshop tactic for our next Student Affairs Committee meeting. Our next Student Affairs Committee meeting will be on the 11th, so not this Friday, next Friday. So anyone and everyone is welcome to come to my Student Affairs Committee meeting. And especially if you are interested in taking part in the de-escalation workshop, I will ensure that I put the de-escalation workshop at the top of the agenda for anyone that would like to attend. My Student Affairs Committee meeting starts at 9:30 AM, and we usually finish at around 12. But like I said, I will ensure that I put the de-escalation workshop at the top of the agenda to be courteous of any students that would like to attend and be a part of the workshop. Then we also had Dr. Ryan Corner come in and share some information with us about boosters and COVID testing, the dates and the times when COVID testing and booster shots would be available to our students and to our community. So that's something that we circulated to our students to ensure that our student body is taking advantage of the COVID testing and the boosters that we are offering. Because as you all know, we updated the board policy for fully vaccinated to include booster shots. So anyone watching that has not gotten their booster yet and would like to get their booster, please reach out to your ASU. They do have the schedule for the days and times that your campus has available booster shots and testing if you have already not been provided with that information. Oh, another thing was, we had a student from the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, Jack Hill, come in and give us an in-depth presentation and a workshop on how it is that someone goes about writing a resolution, proper wording, things that can be turned into resolutions. So previously, I informed everybody that I instructed my committee members to gather with their board and think of ideas that of things that we could potentially turn into a resolution. So we have three really great ideas right now. So I look forward to reaching out to the trustees so that we can collaborate on something to hopefully get these three resolutions on the board to support our students. And then lastly, I had a student by the name of Christina from Los Angeles Valley College. She was actually here today, and she gave public comments. Christina is came to the Student Affairs Committee meeting to speak on behalf of the Abilities Club, which some members from the Abilities Club have also been here to speak against LACC versus PIONE. And Christina came to us to speak, to tell us to be in support of disabled students and to urge us as student leaders to stand with our disabled students and do what we can to ensure that the rights of our disabled communities and the rights of our disabled students remain protected. It's been very apparent in this meeting that our students do not stand with LACC versus PIONE, do stand with PIONE. And I do stand with our students. And I have faith that LACC will be on the right side of history and will do right by its students. Any attack on the disabled community is an attack on every and any marginalized community. LACC has sworn to protect and has sworn to provide a quality education to. But I digress because I look forward to speaking in depthly about this with you all during closed session. But that is all that I have for my report. Thank you.
First, team Martinez, what time would a would a board, would a board member be able to speak at your committee? You have a meeting on Friday?
Yes, next Friday.
Okay, the. All right, it's getting late. Fourth, the fourth?
Excuse me, the next Friday on the 11th?
Oh, the 11th, the 11th, okay. Is there, oh, on March 11? Okay, on March 11. Do you have a, do we have, do you have a trustee that's going to be there? Or do you want me to make sure that a trustee is there?
I do not have a confirmed trustee yet. And so I would appreciate if we could confirm one. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Vares or Moreno, are either of you available on March 11 at 9:00 AM?
I'm not available right now.
You are available?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Trustee Vares, are you available at 9:00 AM?
I currently have a conflict, but let me see if I can move move something. I'd be happy to talk to the students, but I'm not sure I can do it on that day at right now.
Okay. Could I tentatively put you, and you tell me if you cannot, then we'll work it out?
I can talk to the student trustee and see if I, because if I can't do it that day, I'd look for something else to connect with them on.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And I understand if anyone has any time conflicts, I can put you at the top of the agenda. Is that better for your schedule? Or I can put you in the middle of the agenda, wherever it is that it works best for anybody's schedule, I'm going to work with that. And our meeting starts at 9:30.
Thank you, Student trustee Martinez, and thank you, trustee Vares as well. Moving on to item with regard to board travel ratification, may I have a motion and a second to, second, E2? Board, board travel, trustee Vella, motion?
Second.
Second, trustee Moreno, roll call?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Student trustee advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vares?
Yes.
Resolutions Inter appointment of personal commission. May I have a motion and a second on item F1, the interim appointment of Mr. Awada for an extension? May I have a?
So moved.
Trustee Moreno, second?
I'll second.
Trustee Hoffman, second. Is there, is there any comment? Nancy, roll call?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vares?
Yes.
Resolution celebrating 2022 Women's History Month. May I have a motion and a second on item F2, celebrating Women's History Month? Motion?
So moved.
Trustee Anderson, motion?
Second.
Second.
Oh, give it to, give it to our student trustee.
Trustee Martinez, second.
Sure.
Comment?
I'll make a comment. Thank you, trustee Henderson, for introducing this resolution, which we do every year. And I just want to make note that we did add a whereas and resolved about making sure that we are mindful of equal pay. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
I'm sorry.
Trustee Henderson, excuse me?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vares?
Yes.
AB 361, resolution to hold via teleconference of boards committee meeting scheduled for March 16, 2022, regular meeting. May I have a motion and a second on F3?
So moved.
Trustee Anderson, move?
Second.
Trustee Hoffman, second comment. I do have a question. General, interim general provisional counsel. Now, I thought the governor was was changing something or was likely to change something at the end of March.
With the govern- their progress, and they're related to other state agencies at overtime. The state two-part issue remains in a this is a proclamation of a state of emergency, AB 361 applies.
All right, that's it. Any additional comments? Okay, roll call?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vares?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now turn to the chancellor for chancellor's report.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Will, members of the board. Colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to share a few slides related to my monthly report. So here's what I'll cover for today. Today's resolution, we've just, the board announced, we approved the Women's History Month resolution. So so thank you for that, as we continue to recognize and support our women colleagues throughout our district and indeed throughout the state and the world. And I wanted to mention just a couple of activities that are going on at some of our colleges to celebrate this. And again, we will send to the board, and we'll be publicly available, all the other activities occurring during the month of March. You heard some of the reports from our college presidents earlier on some of the activities that are going on to celebrate, uphold, uplift, and recognize the contributions of women to our country in other ways. So I wanted just to take a moment to note this agenda item that's already been approved. Here's what I'll cover today. Of course, the chancellor's monthly is publicly available. It is posted under my webpage. It is there. It answers the question of what's going on at LACC. We always give a status urgency and update on our enrollments that are going on for that month, foundation and philanthropic support that we have received. In this particular case, Women's History Month activities, any news, events, or other announcements. And then we always note and have active links to the ways that this district communicates to its public. And and you can check that out for your identification. So that's what we got going on. So let's just go ahead and continue. Well, we're now at the 100 or so week mark since the global health emergency. And it's important to note that indeed, while the Omicron surge appears to be over, the pandemic is not there. Things are moving in the right direction. We still have three of our colleges that are probably telecommuting during this time that has been extended through the month of March. But we will return to campus normal operations at all nine sites on April 1. So I wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. Our EOC is, of course, as they have been under Dr. Nishisatulich, closely monitoring all the conditions, health orders, and whatnot. I wanted to make sure that the public knew and that our campus constituents knew that our board policies, 2,800 around masking and 2,900 late to vaccinations remains in full effect. Of course, we're encouraging all staff, students who are eligible for the booster shots to indeed get that. And again, to remind ourselves, and everyone is part of our LACC family, that health, self-care, and mental health are more paramount now than ever before. So please, take care. Lots of time that's been given to members of our staff. You heard the 24 additional hours in addition to the hours that have been given by the state government to provide for the health, welfare, and safety of all persons in California and indeed at LACC. Wanted to highlight this. This was mentioned by, I believe, one of our presidents' reports. But this is pretty significant and pretty outstanding, that during this particular time period that we have amassed of being adjusting to a pandemic and hopefully an endemic soon, our students continue to excel under the tremendous support of their faculty, their classified staff, and others who support the success of students. This Jack Kent Cooke Transfer Scholarship is a big deal. And to have 11 students named as semi-finalists nationally amongst the 1,200 applicants that you see there around the country is pretty significant. If you're not aware, this is a scholarship that can add up to well over $120,000 for students, not just in their undergraduate careers, but also to their graduate schools. So this is, I think, the most prestigious undergraduate scholarship there is in the country for community colleges, and we perennially do very well. So let me, first of all, congratulate the students who are named there at five of our colleges for their excellence, for their work, their stamina, their resilience, their stick-to-it-ness. And we congratulate them and hope that they do well in the next phase. Also want to recognize, and this was mentioned by Dr. Ornella's marker date, May 13, for the Culinary Cup. That is the actual Culinary Cup that now stands at Los Angeles Harbor College, where Dr. Dorado has expressed very vociferously that he plans to retain the cup. If you talk to Dr. Vanavood and Dr. Ornella, they don't see it that way. So we invite- Uh, so we invite everybody to check out our students who are all winners, all excellent, uh, in our culinary programs, both at Mission Trade, uh, and at Harbor. So please mark your date, Friday, come, come join us.
Yeah, please. What, I, I, I was, I was, um, pleasantly, um, um, uh, it was very, very nice to see, it called Sabores de Oaxaca. The, the irony is, not irony, the interesting thing is, uh, Oaxacan food is probably the most complicated of all Mexican food. So, I mean, because mole normally takes thirty-two to thirty-nine ingredients specifically, and it's very complicated. So, you know, um, I know I mentioned it in, in the early comments, but it's going to be very interesting, um, to make sure that everything is done from scratch, um, in this entire process, but I'll leave that there.
Okay, there you go. You heard it there.
Forward, and if they're looking for judges, all the, all the trustees, um, uh, have, uh, volunteered to, uh,
And chancellor.
Oh, at the chancellor. And apparently some of the vice chancellors who are looking at me right here, look, vice chancellor, coroner over here.
I think we're all getting hungry right now.
Yeah, you know, but, but they will be judged because we are mole aficionado.
And there it is.
It's going to be interesting. All right.
There it is. Thank you. No, thank you for your comment on that. Okay, so, uh, mark, May thirteenth, please, uh, mark, mark your calendars. Uh, and then again, uh, this was mentioned earlier by the members of our board. We congratulate their former colleague trustee, uh, Mike Fang, who now finds himself as the representative forty-ninth district, so we congratulate him. However. If I can continue, okay. However, uh, the, his, uh, his, uh, wonderful ascension, uh, to the state assembly has now, uh, created a board vacancy. Uh, I want the, the, on behalf of the board of trustees, uh, the public to know, uh, that there are applications now being accepted. Uh, this through our office of general counsel and the deadline to apply to be considered is, uh, Wednesday, April the sixth, Wednesday, April the sixth. And at this point that we are planning, uh, to hold interviews and appointments, uh, at the April thirteenth meeting. So we will, uh, keep you apprised with the first date for those who might be interested in filling the seat. It's the seat that goes, uh, through the appointment on December, uh, the ninth of twenty twenty-two. And then there will be an election, uh, in November to fill the remaining term of Mr. Fang, who was elected in twenty twenty, uh, for, uh, to fill the, the seat to twenty twenty-four. Okay, so I wanted to mention that. So we congratulate, uh, Mr. Ma, uh, he's already, uh, agreed, uh, to carry, uh, a version, uh, a modified and important version of ethnic studies, uh, for, for L A C C D, so we're very, very pleased. And we thank, uh, Mr. Fang for his continued leadership, uh, uh, at, now at the state capital. So he's been a wonderful partner and we continue to look far forward in, in working with him. So here are the board member follow-ups, uh, by Dr. Wellna and member, excuse me, members of the board. Uh, so let me go ahead. I'll take the first three, then I'll ask, uh, my colleague, uh, vice chancellor corner to take, uh, the, the, the last item. So let's start with faculty hires in ethnic studies. So we were asked, uh, how many, how many, uh, faculty hires in ethnic studies will we have, uh, either spring or fall of twenty twenty-two? So this is the list. Uh, we will have a total of ten, uh, in the two disciplines that, that you see there. It does not mean that we won't have courses in Asian American or Native American studies. Does not mean that. These are the full-time tenure-track faculty, uh, that are part of the sixty-five full-time faculty positions that we are hiring, uh, now, uh, in, in the fall. So you can see there that East Los Angeles College will hire three, L A City will hire one African-American studies and Chicano studies, uh, instructor. I will also mention that L A Mission has already hired the person who's begun in Chicano studies. L A Pierce will hire one, Trade Tech will hire one in African-American and Chicano studies. West L A will hire an African-American studies instructor, again, for a total. And I would note that one of the positions for East L A College has a focus on, on Central American, uh, studies. And then one position on focus on the intersectionality between, uh, Chicano, uh, Latino studies and the L G B T Q I plus, uh, community. So, uh, excellent positions, uh, those are ten of sixty-five positions, uh, that we are hiring about fifteen percent of all faculty positions for this fall, uh, spring and fall on a full-time basis. So if you add, uh, next slide, please, this ten, uh, to what we have now, uh, this is the list. And you see there now, we have a total of, of twenty-nine positions in ethnic studies, uh, as of this fall, uh, distributed as you see there. The reason that, that we have made such a strong push on ethnic studies, and this is its own discipline, its own TOPS code, its own canon, its own, it's, it's not a handful of, 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 uh, a, a weeks or, or disciplinary elements of courses in sociology, history, as you might see them, or anthropology or other areas, it's its own canon, it's its own discipline. It's been around, uh, for well over fifty years. The reason that we've taken such a strong, uh, position on hiring said positions is because it's now a requirement for both the high school, a graduation requirement and, uh, the California State University graduation requirement. And through the border, board of governors regulatory changes last year, it's now a requirement, uh, for the associate's degree for California community colleges. So indeed, the three large segments, public segments of both, uh, of both high school and, uh, community college and the C S U system have this particular requirement.
Chancellor?
Yes.
I'm the one who request, could you go back to the previous slide?
Yes, please.
Okay. I just, it, it's very important, you know, um, you know, to, we had some cross tabs, I would put them in yellow. Um, Asian American studies, no new hires, Native American studies, no new hires. Harbor College have no new hires in any, in any ethnic studies. Southwest College had no new hires in ethnic studies, Valley College had no new hires in ethnic studies. So, you know, um, I know there's got to be some conversation, but it, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a healthy thing when, uh, and I don't know if there's any plans, but the part of this is to identify, uh, that the fact of, I don't know why these colleges don't have a, anything. And, um, do you know if there's any plans for any Asian American studies, any Native American studies, or why those colleges are at zero?
Yeah, let me, let me answer some of that. Uh, there are courses planned in those areas and typically full-time tenure-track positions, uh, have to have a, as part of the faculty prioritization process, that is a local process. Uh, it does have to have enrollments in those areas, uh, so the colleges that don't have, uh, hires this year are, are looking to build enrollments, uh, through the use of adjunct or faculty, uh, in those particular areas. So, uh, the other colleges have more established programs, have adjunct faculty in those areas and have course enrollments in areas that justify and substantiate, uh, the, uh, the full-time faculty hires. So that, so, so that's how, uh, it, uh, it, uh, begins. Um, so there will be courses, but there, at this year, no full-time faculty hires, and that is what they will continue to monitor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If you could go on to the next couple of slides, so I can, uh, Mr. Moreno, this is the slide, uh, and, and the following side that you have been, that you asked for. These are the staffing trends, um, by classification. We started in two thousand and eight and went, uh, to, to last year. And so that gives you a sense of the number of, of, of people that we have hired here at L A C C D. So I'll just start with the top line. You could see from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-one, we've had, uh, uh, an, an additional, uh, nine, uh, persons that are now part of our L A C C D family during that time period. If you look at classified stuff, it's actually gone down about twenty-six, uh, uh, positions, um, or, or about, looks like about eleven or so, uh, per, percent, uh, from, uh, two thousand and eight. It's like a full-time faculty, it's essentially, uh, stayed relatively stable with thirteen less positions, full-time faculty. About this, like, in less than one percent, uh, change, uh, during that time. You see some fluctuations up and down, and clearly, these are reflective of some of the staff, uh, retirement incentive programs that we've had, uh, twice, uh, during my tenure in twenty sixteen and again in twenty, uh, twenty. If you look at the, uh, our, our faculty colleagues who are adjunct or part-time, uh, you've seen a significant drop. Uh, you see, you know, there's, it's well over, um, it looks like eighteen percent or minus six hundred plus persons, uh, that's, uh, due to our enrollments, uh, uh, drops that we've had. Uh, so that's, so those adjunct faculty that, that they have, uh, are fewer today than we had back in two thousand, uh, and eight. If you look at student employees, I mean, this is, uh, we thought we would put that in there. They're a valuable part of our academic community, but there's been some significant drops, moving from twenty-two hundred plus to just under eight hundred. Clearly COVID has had, uh, a significant impact. We, we lost, we've lost now two-thirds of our students who were with us in two thousand and nine. We're looking forward, uh, to returning to campus, uh, this fall, uh, in a, in a real significant way, uh, to normalize, uh, the academic experience, uh, that's been different from the last one hundred weeks, uh, and then, and, and of course, uh, hire more students, uh, to assist us to do that.
Can I, uh, I'd work? Yeah, I ask a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I noticed that, um, there's no two thousand and twenty. Is that two thousand and twenty-one supposed to be two thousand and twenty?
Uh, no, sir. If you look at the, we just tabbed it differently. Uh, it's, it's every two years. If you just look at the tabs roughly.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they're all kind of spread out within.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
Yeah, we just try to give a mark.
But you notice two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that's not two years, so I got.
That's correct. Yeah, we started that way because we had that data readily available, so we just went every other year. There was no particular rhyme where we, we wanted.
And the, the other piece to this was, uh, uh, kind of a regression line showing the, the relative number of employees versus the number of students we have.
Yeah, let me, let me do that, uh, let me just say one more thing, um, and then I'll get to the next slide that I, asks, answers that question specifically. If you look at the, you know, if, uh, the overall, from ten thousand, five thirty-four to eighty-two ninety-four, that's a twenty-one percent drop. But the vast majority of that are, 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 are part-time faculty, are student employees and are unclassified workers who do a whole variety of, of contractual work. Um, so if you take those groups out just for a moment, just take those groups out. And I just, I thought I would be curious to see, you know, that the difference is thirty positions between two thousand and eight, uh, and two thousand and twenty-one. Thirty positions are less than one percent. Um, uh, so we've remained relatively stable with respect to our permanent, uh, full-time, uh, staff and have had more fluctuation in the other categories, uh, that I, that I mentioned. Now let's go to the next slide, uh, Mr. Moreno. This is the slide you were looking for. Um, so this is, gives you a sense over that same, uh, time period, more or less, the trend lines, uh, between, between, uh, the enrollments uh, and the number of, uh, F, F T S, we'll call F T S, uh, enrollments, that's the blue line. Uh, and the red line is essentially the staffing line. So you could see, uh, there's been, you know, some parallel in terms of the curve and, uh, and whatnot. And clearly now we're, uh, much more aligned, uh, low, you know, much more aligned with respect to staff commensurate with, with our F T S. So that's, uh, I know this is what you were looking for, uh, and this is, uh, the, uh, uh, the chart that shows that. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Moreno, or other members of the board on these? I mean, I have a couple, one more area, then I'll pitch it to Dr. Corner, but I wanted to pause here to see if you had any questions on, on anything thus far.
I, 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 I do have a question. So, uh, trustee Moreno, so with regard to, your request was this, one, did, did, did it meet your expectation? Two, did, did, could you, could, help the, the rest of us understand what you were looking for here to help us understand? What was our understanding from here?
Well, you know what, uh, what's a bit, a little bit questionable is that we, I monitor, I don't know, for the last five, seven, for a hundred years now, I don't, every, every year. I monitor those notices you get, those, uh, uh, the number of students are enrolled, but in the semester, you know, the, so many days before the start, so many days after. I monitor that, that, uh, for, uh, fifty years now practically. So, uh, and I know that the numbers have been dropping significantly. For instance, if you just took a, take a look at current statistics. And I noticed that as I, you know, as we begin to identify positions, I noticed there's an increase like, for, in vice chancellors to six versus the normal three, well, I had for centuries. And, uh, and things like, and then I know we approve a number of positions. As a matter of fact, we're adding faculty, yet the enrollment is substantially declining. So, uh, this is a problem in terms of efficiency. Not only are we talking about building a larger, a deficit, but if you're having a student problem and you're employing greater numbers of people, it doesn't matter what discipline they're in, you are, you're building a major, major, uh, disaster in a, in the years ahead. Name not appear that now, we have, seem to have a lot of money, but we're subsidizing inefficiency. And so I like to see the numbers parallel or enrollments. I, I don't know what happened in this particular chart. I noticed there was a shift in two thousand, uh, two thousand and thirteen or so. But, uh, the bottom line is that, uh, this is not, if you were to have a business, you have a planning document and you saw these numbers, they'd be a major concern or part of the, uh, management team. And I think that rather than being, uh, proud of the number of new positions we're hiring, that has to be, uh, dampened by the reality of that you were declining enrollment. And if that's the case, you're building a major catastrophe. I was here when we went through that twice. And, uh, the numbers are moving very similar than they did in the past.
It's, it's.
This, they, they need to be incorporated in our planning. Whatever we do, we need to be aware what we're talking about. We just talked about the hiring of new faculty. Well, you, you, you know, I'm not going to go into great detail about that discussion, other than say is that you're not talking about faculty hires, you're talking about offerings. The offers can be covered by full-time faculty in other disciplines or that discipline. You don't need to add more people. The more you add tenure faculty, more difficult it becomes to be able for the operations district. And that includes the staff that we've hired, substantial numbers there, if you notice, we looked at the chart. Anyways, that's, uh, I want everyone to be aware of the condition we're in because, uh, when, when, uh, the stuff hits the fan in the future, you'll know why. We need to take care of it now.
Thank you. That, that, that understanding is, is, is helpful, chancellor.
Okay, uh, all right, so thank you for that. The next slide, please. This is the, uh, Mr. Vella, you asked for this information. Uh, these are the housing contracts that we have in place. Uh, two weeks ago, we had a very robust discussion and the board passed a, a very complete, comprehensive, a set of, uh, resolution, uh, a resolution that really sets us on a chart, a, a course, uh, to, to look at the facilities and to look within the discussion of facilities, the potential of, of student housing. I'm happy to report that the Department of Finance has, has funded all nine of our feasibility, uh, studies at our colleges to look at whether this might work, whether this pencils out. But in the meantime, the discussion of how do we address, uh, students who are housing insecure? We have, uh, five agencies that the board approved that several months ago, of, uh, nonprofit firms, uh, that include, uh, Los Angeles Room and Board, a Shar of Hope, Seed, Opportunity House and Hobenous Inc., uh, that are providing shelter and support for one hundred students, um, at the moment that the district, uh, is paying for. Uh, we have well over two hundred plus slots that will be, will be available, uh, by the end of the academic year. So if the discussion is how do, are we addressing current, uh, student needs in the housing area, um, through the partnerships, uh, with, uh, our five providers, uh, in the community, and I wanted to just lay out, uh, that, uh, this is the current, uh, situation, uh, that we are, uh, reserving slots, if you will, uh, for housing, uh, insecure. So my, my thanks to the college presidents, uh, to our providers and to all those who are providing, uh, support to these individuals that allow them, uh, to remain in school. So, uh, Mr. Vella, that was, um, something you had asked for and others, uh, are there any questions I could answer, Mr. Vella?
I, I, not, thank you very much, and I appreciate your following up on this, uh, means a lot. Um, I, I have had discussions with, with, uh, staff and, um, and, you know, uh, as well as, um, some of the stakeholder groups about, you know, um, meeting, you know, the students where they're at, um, to increase, you know, any type of marketing, uh, to assist, um, also the nonprofits that are participating, uh, how can they increase, um, outreach? Seeing that, um, you know, during the last Omicron surge, we had, um, you know, mixed messaging in the county that, you know, a lot of students in particular, um, at the last advisory council that I attended, um, were confused about, you know, um, should they go back to school? And so, you know, we had a lot of students that, you know, quote unquote, went underground. Um, and again, you know, hopefully now that the county's relaxing, ma, you know, mask mandates, um, you know, the state seems to also do that. We, you know, our students can then, you know, come up and, um, learn about all these opportunities in whatever way possible. So that's one kind of section there. I'm really happy to hear about the planning, uh, dollars simply because of this. So in what we're looking for, you know, and, and again, you know, thanks to my colleagues too, uh, who, you know, are also optimistic about going out there, really researching our need and also your interest, that's where, one of the things that, um, I'm, you know, also asking is that, um, you know, when you have a situation like these nonprofits where, you know, their housing opportunities, they are. They are and could be permanent as long as they're, you know, full time students. Um but it lends itself to. Section of the housing insecure population that we have, in particular uh that, you know, number one. They feel comfortable in uh in a setting where there are multiple beds in a room. Uh for example, or the fact that it's not, you know, a a an apartment unit. Uh that it's more, you know, shared housing uh in particular. So that fits that, you know, perfectly to some of the population. That uh, you know, can can live that way. Uh I definitely would count myself, you know, in college. I, you know, did the that type of setting with my uh college friends and. You know, it could it could be and lends itself to a great opportunity and a great uh ability to. Um, you know, live while you're going full time to school. The some of what if, you know. We can look at in these planning um scenarios is, you know, how can we look for? Um, you know, those single mothers that might need, you know, their individual unit, apartment unit, let's say. Or a veteran or, you know, someone who's trans that feels, you know, that they need that privacy, that can't live in a shared. Facility. So that's a big difference. And so, you know, I I wanted to clarify that because we have not really talked about that. We're out there and looking at that need, but I do want to ensure and and actually ask today now here. That if you could please, Chancellor, ensure that these uh planning activities. Um, you know, look for that uh need where it's, you know, the difference between kind of a shared family house. Setting where individual students can share a room or multiple rooms in a house versus having their own unit. And what does that section uh of our housing and security uh? You know, are our students experience housing insecurity? What does that look like? You know, um and so is it single parents, is it veterans, so on and so forth, that that have a necessity to have their own? You know, dedicated apartment unit. So anyway, just wanted to throw that out there.
I uh I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I see this chart has uh, maybe I missed it. I I have to beg your forgiveness. What is the student housing contracts?
Oh, yeah, these are the spaces that we are paying for. Uh the state of California. I had about eighteen uh, the let me ref- let me start again. The state of California uh last year budgeted uh several dollars uh to California community colleges. For housing insecurity. The L A C C D is receiving about eighteen million dollars in the space. We've not received at all. Uh only about half of it has come through. That's been distributed to our colleges. Uh and we've made um uh decisions related to how we're going to use that emergency aid that includes housing. Uh so this is this is part of that decision making, so.
So eight eighteen million dollars?
Yes, for for emergency aid that could go directly to students and or to meet their basic needs.
So what is housing contracts? How does that work with regard to housing contracts?
Those are beds. Those are beds at about ten thousand dollars each per academic year.
And these are beds and apartments, sir?
No, no, sir. It's um the L A Room and Board, um Shire of Hope, uh they have a. It's more like a house, housing, like normal homes, and they've got the rooms and beds in the rooms. Of the L A Room and Board is more like uh what you might see a fraternity sorority with multiple big rooms and multiple beds inside. Uh those rooms and uh Seed has something much more, you know, they've got.
So each of these colleges negotiated a. An agreement with some.
Uh actually, the district helped to negotiate with the support of the colleges, these agreements, yes.
And I noticed that the district has fourteen of its own, whereas what's.
Well, that's just slots available for students who need housing that we're picking up.
So are these look, are these, when you say uh, these aren't beds, these are multiple beds?
No, there's a bed. Those are one hundred beds for one hundred students.
Oh, one hundred beds?
Five settings.
Oh, I see. When you said contracts.
Yeah, this, yeah, the the kind there, yeah, it's because we're designating. Locations and spaces that we're paying for, so our students who don't have income or don't have or are housing.
But we have a hundred beds available.
A hundred beds. That's that's better stated, sir.
And and for how long a period of time?
It's a, well, it's for this year. It's a full year. And with our interest, uh we've got resources to continue uh during for the duration of the students tenure here.
Or does anyone know how these how these are distributed?
Well, it's uh how the distributor is based on the college's need.
I mean, I'm talking about there's so few beds given the number of. Uh students we have.
That's correct. Uh we're finding that the number of beds at the moment is sufficing the need. We're not aware, you know, we're not aware of any housing insecure student. That does not have a place to stay, given the rules and regs. Again, there's some very specific definition of what it means to be unhoused. Uh versus uh I don't live in a a safe place or a place that's hospitable or whatnot. Those are very different. These are students who are technically given these organizations' mission unhoused, that they don't have anywhere else to go.
All right, thank you.
Um Chancellor, also, um if you could um, you know, see if the county. Um can refer as well. I know that the uh peer navigators.
Yes.
Um have casework and, you know, I'd love for us to connect with them. Cause initially they were looking at how many um, you know, people out there needed, you know, housing resources. Um and and from what I hear, um and Miss Velos, you could correct me if I'm wrong. During COVID, because we're not, we were not on campus, the peer navigators were not as active. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if whether they tempered their support. They're back now. We have full engagement and they're back now. That's.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, so.
That I know.
Let's definitely engage them. Thank you.
Yeah, the Board of Supervisors uh has granted for L A County Community Colleges almost a million dollars that we advocated for. Uh for these uh point of contacts, uh persons that could provide a whole variety of very important. Uh resources for students that goes beyond housing, uh food, mental health, and other kinds of support systems. Uh that uh our students need uh during this period, pre.
Really, really appreciate that, and I know that um, you know, you were integral in that, um, you know, going to the Board of Supervisors in person, so thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board before I pitch it to uh Doctor Corner? Okay, wait, one last piece, uh Doctor Wellner. Yeah, so Doctor Corner, take us to the next couple of slides. It's uh happy to make, I guess, information and announcement, uh Doctor Wellner?
Yeah, pitch it to our great chan- Vice Chancellor. The great, the honorable.
Absolutely. Thank you, uh Chancellor.
In that order.
So uh at the request of Board President Wellner, we looked into our non-English monolingual populations. And in essence, we wanted to better understand the communities throughout Los Angeles County that have limited English proficiency or. As it says here, feel that they speak English less than well. Based on the twenty nineteen um uh American Community Survey, which is done every year in between the census. It's estimated that there's two point two million people in Los Angeles that speak English less than very well. Most common languages in uh Los Angeles uh for this group are Spanish, Chinese, Korean, Armenian, and Tagalog. Uh what that shows is a large spread of uh language areas that need to be focused on. The uh Asian Pacific Americans. American Pacific, uh the Asian Pacific American Legal Center. Also produced a report where they were looking at language isolation and where different communities uh. Had limited English proficiency and found about one point eight million people of working age, eighteen to sixty four, who classified as. Limited English proficiency. They also provided some recommendations. Uh one is to do additional data collection and disaggregation, and I can say I definitely agree with this because. The conversation on monolingual uh non-English speakers is a difficult one, because even in this slide, you can see that's not the question that folks ask. Uh they they ask questions like, do you speak English less than very well? Or do you uh, they ask, do you have limited English proficiency where you feel uncomfortable speaking English? But um we all know that there's great variation and subjectivity into that. And it's going to be a real need to work with these communities to see what the language barriers are and how we can best support. They also asked for increased interpretation services in health and social services, which was the focus of the report. And to support opportunities to learn English for those groups uh that had the limited English proficiency. We go to the next slide. Currently at L A C C D, we offer uh many opportunities for uh those who are English language learners or with in limited English proficiency. One of the biggest areas and it's in non-credit and credit ESL. The non-credit ESL is one of our uh larger programs in our adult education pro- program, non-credit. We also offer G E D preparation uh that focuses on multi- multiple languages and in some cases with native instruction. We have vocational ESL, which seeks to provide language instruction uh related to the specific skill sets and. Uh areas of work that people are interested in. And new, and we'll uh get more into this when we have time, uh integrated education and training. Uh which is something our adult ed teams have been working on over about the last uh six months to a year. To do the type of work where we can look at both vocational training and integrated uh language skills. Uh in addition, at Trade Tech, they've been running for quite some time now an ALOS program, which provides native language instruction. Uh in construction and other of the um the trades. Uh partnered with ESL classes uh so that they can do that. And that is uh what is recommended across the state is partnering these classes with English. But um regardless of the efforts put move forward, there's a big population within our community and one that uh needs to have some focus. And with that, I'll pass off to Board President Wellner for the last bullet.
There another slide? Uh no, sir. Okay. Can you go ba- uh back to the other one, the other slide? The the, you know, um let me just say, to to be fair, the conversation on student housing. Um started uh before I came on board by by some of my previous colleagues. Um and I remember the the conversation in two thousand seventeen and someone, uh another trustee said to me, oh, you just want to offer. You just want to help the the homeless students. I remember uh the discussion was uh seen as as uh as not a positive one. Or the conversation on ethnic studies that really took a a a uh. Has taken a positive turn, even though we're still behind, but at least we're having a conversation. So the 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 conversation is is about is about looking at twenty three percent of the population. That that speaks less or that speaks less than very well English. The 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 idea is, when you have twenty three percent of the population. Uh what, how are we dealing with this as a district? And again, just to read the 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 mission statement of the of the district, which should be central, and some of our 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 colleagues who were. Here earlier said it, but the mission of L A C C D is to foster student success for all individuals. Seeking advancement by providing equitable and supportive learning environments at our nine and our oncologists. Um again, the concept of equitable and supportive. So, you know, the the idea is. If you, if you are, if the community that is not speaking English. Is has to first learn English, which is fine. Everyone is promoting English, everyone is promoting, you know, learning English. The idea is. Are we delaying their skill development because we're not offering, like Chancellor Vegas says, in in language, in language learning? As that process is moving forward, and when we have twenty three percent of our region. That has a linguistic issue. Is a education that is delayed at the same time, an education that is denied. So the conversation that's going to be happening, can you go to the next slide? In the in the ad hoc committee, um in the ad hoc uh, got the ad hoc committee. On non-English monolingual Spanish uh um speakers isn't really outreach. The question is really looking at this community and saying. How is this community an opportunity for growth for L A C C D? Literally, we're looking at twenty three percent of the population that we are not serving. I mean, we might be serving at the periphery because, but the ultimate question is. At what level of of speaking English are folks comfortable with attending our colleges? And that's an individual conversation, very personal. However, when you're looking at skill development from from nursing. From construction to to um is. Looking at what we're doing and saying, and some people might say, well, you know, do we do we use interpreters like the court system uh does? Or are there alternative methods? So on on March seventeenth, the ad hoc committee is going to be meeting this. Out outreach, right? Not saying, hey, we have classes in English. They may be saying, well, that's fine, but we have no idea what you're talking about. You know, you're, and this isn't about Spanish speaking, this is about all of the languages. And in order to look at the at the district, at our entire district holistically. In order to make sure that our region is increasing its skill level and economically benefiting from everyone who is who is here. So that's the that's the the beginning of the conversation. Um it's 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 not an, it's not a conversation about about folks not learning English. It's a conversation about skill development and not delaying the skill development capacity of students. As they get into edu- edu- education. So uh trustee Henderson and trustee Vettis are part of the ad hoc committee. I just wanted to see if my colleagues had any 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 questions. Done noted?
Um trustee trustee.
Yeah.
The only thing I would um suggest um. That as part of the conversation, we we may want to um include the academic senate here um. Uh in terms of the dialogues, I think there's um quite a bit from the teaching side of it. Uh especially for those that um uh have been the leaders in um our adult ed uh division. Um there's a, there's a lot of their voice that I think could be included in um. In in this long term conversation.
Oh, you know what? That thank that, thank you for that. And you know, on on the seventeenth, I mean, you know, we're 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 fairly organizing that. Um the those conversations will occur. Thank you for for pointing that out. And we are bringing faculty that are doing a lot of programs and had a lot, have a lot of of great energy. Um, you know, from from West LA College, from Piers to Mission to East. That are that are excited about the conversation and about whole new areas of learning, of skill learning. But thank you for 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 pointing that out, and I should have done that. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, there there are, um this were the um in terms of the ad hoc committees. There there is in terms of the uh, is that a slide up or?
No.
Okay, so there there is an additional um ad hoc committee that I have requested trustee Henderson and trustee. Um. Hoffman. Um with regard to the um board ad hoc committee on on black student um outcomes. Looking at potentially resolutions to come back uh to 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 the board. Um, you know, the 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 difference is in terms of looking at what may be direct action. Um, you know, in terms of our our work with with all senior management, obviously, including our 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 chancellor. Um and um so I wanted to make sure that 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 the board knows, along with this with the ad hoc committee on on um. Um student athletes. Um that is going to be, and we should probably have a report at the next time on how all the ad hoc committees are going. Trustee Vettis, do you want to say anything about the 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 student athlete ad hoc committee?
Um, no, we're preparing uh. Uh a meeting in the near future, but I think the desire was to um. Take a true inventory of of athletics. There's been quite a bit of change because of COVID, and certainly we heard from a. Former coach and public comment. Um but athletics um facilities. Um uh the students that participate um. And uh the coaches that are either a part of a stipend or part of a a faculty group um. Uh present uh quite a large um uh component of the colleges, and I think uh they're in desperate need of of attention. And and support. So um, so yeah, lots 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 more to come from that.
Okay, thank you. We're looking forward to it. Um, could we um, would call Chancellor, that is the end of the.
End of the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're now going to move into into the combined consent calendar, might require majority vote. Um board members, we have um for review, the combined consent calendar, that's an I one, right?
Yes, I.
I one through U through U eight. These items include consent calendars for human resources, personnel mission, academic affairs, student services, budget and finance, budget, business, and facilities. Basically, everything? Items which are required, which require additional information from the board, from the board. Board members? Items which are required, which require additional information from the board, from the board. Board members? Okay, seeing none, um, seeing none. May I have a motion and a second to adopt all the remaining items, combined consent calendar, I one through U eight? Trustee Bella?
Second.
Trustee Henderson, second. Any comments? Okay, roll call.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
That's the next one, right? Okay. Business items. Board members, we will now review the business items, V one through V four. Are there, are there any items which require additional information? Please state the item number on the agenda where they, where, where we may find it. Board members, anything you want to pull?
Um, can I, can I ask a quick question on, uh, business item, uh, three?
Sure. It's just a, just an informative question?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm prepared to support it, but I just wanted to, um, see if we, uh, uh, the, the, we, for the past couple of years, we had, uh,
Trustee Vettis?
Yeah, go ahead.
If there's anyone else. Is there anyone else that wants more information on, on an item? I mean, we could pull it, there's different ways of doing it, but, but we'll, we'll do it this way for now. Uh, trustee Moreno, Bella, Hoffman, anything?
No.
Trustee Henderson? Okay, um, uh, trustee, trustee Vettis, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, I just wanted to ask, uh, um, for item number three, which is, um, um, a mental health services, um, effort. I just wanted to be clear that whether this was, um, the, the student fee or is this, um, related to, um, what, what, can I get some just clarity on where this funding is coming from? And how did this, how does this interact with our, with our student, um, fee efforts?
Okay, let me start answering that question, then I would invite Dr. Gribbins, uh, into the room if there's anything different. This is actually, um, a, uh, professional services agreement that was resulted from, uh, an RFP. And this is to renew an agreement that the college has with Northeast Valley Health Corporation, where they provide health services, including the mental health that you described, um, Mr. Vettis. So I believe this is a cost that is borne out, uh, by student fees that we collect. And then we pay the, um, the provider. This is for services that began last July first and through June thirtieth of, of this year. So I don't know if Dr. Gribbins is online that can add anything in, in addition to that, but that's my understanding.
Chancellor, I believe this was at Mission College.
Oh, oh, excuse me, then extract, uh, pardon me, I didn't see that. It said, Dr. Nellis? Uh, let me have to the room. I, I believe it's, it still holds, that it's providing the health services, including mental health. Uh, to the students at LA Mission and indeed it's, uh, uh, if I'm correct, we do, we are allowed to use student health fees to pay these types of costs.
And I, and I just, and I guess the, the clarification I'd, I'd like is, uh, because we typically housed um, mental health, uh, separately than health services. So I'm just curious about sort of the organizational effort of it's together combined, how, how are you, you know, how are we viewing this, uh, as an effort? And, and I'm, I'm totally fine with the model being, uh, like a total health package. Um, but I just wanted to understand, since we've had, um, uh, a number of contracts that we've viewed over the years, it seemed to be either one or the other.
Okay. Yeah, let me ask that Dr. Nellis to weigh in on what the model is that they're at Mission. Dr. Nellis?
Thank you, trustee Vettis. Uh, so regarding your initial question on how this is covered, as Chancellor Rodriguez said, this is covered through our student fees. Um, and we have, uh, our model is separate. This does not include the mental health component. We have a separate wellness center that, that includes the, the wraparound services, including mental health. This is strictly the health, um, uh, the partnership with, with the, the health that includes checkups, that includes, you know, students who, who need regular general healthcare. Um, we have that on site.
Okay. Um, no, I appreciate the answer. And like I said, I think from the standpoint of many students and staff that have come to us over the years, they've talked about sort of the mental health crisis that's been, um, occurring. And, and I know we're, I know the presidents are working, I know there's proposals coming forward. Um, but I just wanted to check as we're renewing this, what it means exactly. So I think we're, so it's safe to say that this is still focused on, on, uh, physical health and there are other efforts to deal with mental health.
Absolutely. We have several other resources for, for the mental health component. This is just a separate, separate resource here. As you mentioned, this is just for the physical healthcare.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to adopt V one through V four?
So moved.
Trustee Henderson moved, second?
Second.
Trustee Vettis, second. Any additional comments? None noted. Roll call.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Board members, we will now review the facilitaries, W one through W seven. Are there any items which require additional information? Please hit the item. Do you want, if you want, have additional questions or pull for a separate vote? Board members? None, none noted. May I have a motion to approve items W one, W, to W seven?
Moved.
Trustee Henderson, a, a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Vettis, second. Any additional comments? None noted. Roll call.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, next item, notice reports and informatives. Um, there are two, um, informatives, no action required. Um, Chancellor?
Yes, thank you. For your information, it's, uh, no action is necessary. We have the second quarter financial status report by Ms. Gordon and her team that we're presenting to you. That ends December thirty-four, twenty, uh, twenty-one. And then we have also, as we are always do, a notification of out-of-state travel for our students. No action required, just information. And our students are headed to Washington DC for the National Student Advocacy Conference. I will remind the board that we do have a several over ten no-travel states. Uh, DC is not one of them.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. Um, are there any announcements indicate, uh, indications of future proposed actions by members of the Board of Trustees?
President Bueno?
Yes, trustee Bella?
Um, I would like to, uh, see if staff could work on a resolution, um, condemning, um, the Russian attack on Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd like to, I'd like to work on that one as, as well. Um, I, I, it might be a good idea, Chancellor, to have that as, as one of those resolutions where everyone, um, is, uh, has the opportunity, but let's have a further conversation about that. I don't want to force anyone in public to do that. Any other comments, questions, indications, anything from board members?
Trustee, uh, well, I, I do have one.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I do want to say, I think, uh, we haven't had the conversation yet, but, uh, um, and maybe it's coming, but, uh, uh, we have an upcoming June, um, uh, a June primary election, a statewide election. And, uh, in past years, we've, uh, designated our campuses vote centers. Um, I'm not sure if the requests have come forward, um, but, uh, but if there is, um, um, a request that comes forward, I think we agendized them in the past. But if there is a way we can like facilitate and continue to operate as, as potential vote centers, if the county feels it's necessary and valuable, um, I think it's something that should happen. And, uh, I will say that, um, in addition to that, I know there's a number of, of, of debates, particularly for the mayor of Los Angeles. And, um, if there is, um, um, uh, potential opportunities for the campuses to be a host, um, that, uh, um, because I know all Angelitos and certainly our students, uh, um, care and, and have a thought process in terms of the future mayor. And certainly we work very closely with the past several, uh, in terms of the district, including with our college, uh, promise program with, with the current mayor and, including transit buses, et cetera. But, uh, but it would be great, um, if asked, that we could be in position to, uh, support that effort. And, uh, and, and make sure that our students or faculty can all have easy access to, uh, participating in, in the electoral process.
And thank you, uh, so noted, Mr. Vettis.
Okay. Uh, thank you, trustee, uh, Vettis. Uh, you know, it would be interesting to have a debate um, that we would host as a, obviously a nonpartisan education, uh, focused. Um, and, and, um, I, I, I do apologize, uh, while Luca was making sure that I, that I, that I'm doing all my due diligence here. Um, and so we can have an offline conversation about, about that. I, I think we could make our issues, um, the center of, 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 uh, of, of everything, and, and everything that is in LA, so.
And, and I, and I know trustee Bueno that Loyola Marymount University was a recent host, um, and, uh,
Yeah, but we could do, do it better.
It's, um, it's very appropriate for us to do those kinds of things. And certainly, Cal State LA and Cal State.
We know, we know the folks at LMU and yeah, we could do it better. I mean, me, me saying that is very direct, not accidental. Yes, Fernando Geta will get a little upset, but we could do better. But he would be happy because we should improve on each other. And that's what we look at in education.
What the heck?
All right. Um, so that being said, um, let's see, uh, with regard to request, um, to speak on closed agenda items. Um, we did go through that. There were two individuals who did not speak, Deborah Williams and Austin Rogers. Uh, are Deborah Williams and Ro- Ro- and Austin Rogers in the, uh, I was going to say in the studio, um, in the boom. Are they?
Um, the, the people that are on the list are not. We have two raised hands that they want to speak on the, uh,
Okay, so let's bring them on board. Two minutes? Yeah. Hello? Are they, are they, are they coming on board or? Okay, let's give it ten seconds. Okay.
Hello? Um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you can say your name, you have two minutes exactly.
Go ahead, please.
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry. Um, my name is Jessica Lumpen, and I am here to talk about the Payon case. Um, hello, LACC D Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Jessica Lumpen, and I was born without hands and feet. I'm a first generation student triple majoring at Coastline College. And I'm a member of Coastline Associated Student Government. And I am treasurer of Region Eight of the SS CCC, which is the Student Center for California Community Colleges. Additionally, I work for Diversability, which is a small disability-led company that works to elevate disabled people. I am appealing to you today to settle your case in the Payon versus LACC D lawsuit. And with the law, I started taking this case to the Supreme Court. This case has a wide impact across multiple civil rights laws, including the Americans with Disabilities Act. And this case will impact disabled people, persons of color, and other minorities. As a disabled person, as a disabled student, I was unable to graduate high school on time due to policy that impacted me and blocked me from graduating. I requested accommodation from my school for years, and solely because of their refusal to accommodate me, I graduated high school five years late. I now have the privilege of attending college because I was finally given the accommodation that I requested two years ago. And I finished my first semester in fall twenty twenty-one with a four point O. The extreme denial of accommodation that delayed my accom- my graduation should never happen to anyone else ever again, whether in high school or college. And that's why I'm here today. This parent impact refers to policies that result in unintentional discrimination. If you move forward with this lawsuit, the Americans with Disabilities Act and other anti-discrimination laws will lose their power because unintentional discrimination is still discrimination. And disability rights are human rights. And the law does ensure and protect people who face unintentional discrimination. According to a study, only six percent of all disability discrimination lawsuits win their cases. I am appealing to you to ask you, don't make that success rate even lower. As a student who was born without hands and feet, my livelihood depends on laws like the ADA. And I believe education should be available to everyone. And I would like to think you do too. Thank you.
Ms. Lumpens, I want to thank you for, for taking the time.
Anna? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Anna Nam, and I'm the Chief Justice of the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College. I'm here to stand with Mr. Payon and the students of the LA Community College District, not just the students who are visually impaired, not just the students with disabilities, but all students. I stand here as a student with an invisible disability who has been supported by my college's student services and as a student who is constantly learning from other students in the classroom. This includes our students with disabilities. I'm constantly empowered and supported by my fellow students from diverse backgrounds. Disability services are a basic need, and students with disabilities and from diverse backgrounds are the makeup of community colleges. Administrators of the Board of Trustees, I urge you to stop moving this case forward and start looking inwards on how to support your students from the inside out. Community colleges are diverse, equitable, inclusive, and accessible options to higher education. I urge you to move to stop this case and start reallocating your time, your energy, and your budget for disabled student services before community colleges become a privilege rather than an opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Prova, Guntee?
Thank you for your time, trustees and chancellors. My name is Apurva Guntee, and I serve the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College as the Vice President of External Affairs. I truly want to reiterate what my peers have said, that by proceeding with this case, it sets a national precedent, which will hurt many, many under- students. As a person who requires accommodations through the Disabled Student Programs and Services, or DSPS at IVC, I've only been able to succeed as a student and leader due to these accommodations, as well as many others who are successful in providing a great name to their respective community colleges. By proceeding with this case, I would like to remind that this harms the students that create that name and bring in college, uh, students to your colleges. In the long run, it ends up harming you, the LACC D Board of Trustees as well. I urge you to please rethink continuing with this case. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional speakers?
Hurin Lee? Hurin Lee?
Hello, LACC D Board of Trustees, Chancellor and all. I'll be following on with my fellow colleagues and commenting on the case with Payon. My name is Hurin Lee, and I serve as a Senator and Associate Students of Irvine Valley College. Educators and those who make decisions regarding our education should uphold moral values in ensuring that every student can have the best possible education. By bringing the Payon-Mason case to the Supreme Court, you are encouraging the oppression of underrepresented students and ignoring individuals who have traditionally not been represented in our education system. If you bring this to the Supreme Court, you're enforcing the idea that students with disabilities should not be given equitable education nor equal opportunities. Our entire society works through a system that have not considered individuals with disabilities. Asking for accommodations, they are asking for their basic rights. They are asking for accommodations because our societal system has failed to create a world that is inclusive of all. Accommodations are the way our society, our flawed society can work towards equity for our marginalized communities. On another note, if this really was unintentional discrimination, this is not the attitude someone who has, quote, unintentionally discriminated students should have. Instead of arguing that these individuals who are fighting for their given rights are asking for taxpayer money, I ask that you reconsider your stance and instead invest the money for the legal fields, fees that will be going into this case into creating equitable, accessible resources for LACC D students. Thank you.
Rachel? Avalos? Rachel?
Hello, Board of Trustees. I am Rachel Avalos, a community college student and Senator on Associated Students at Irvine Valley College, along with my peers that have just spoke, spoken. Um, the resources from disabled programs and services saved my life and allowed me to pursue my education as a disabled student and daughter of immigrants. And the respect from our DSPS counselors for our rights has brought me from suicidality because of high school disability and accessibility to rebuilding my confidence and becoming a student representative. If the LACC D is so heavily concerned about the financial damage when students don't receive the disability resources they need, this reveals to us that the dis- districts disability services are not prepared enough to meet the needs of our students. This can easily be solved by consulting legal, civil rights professionals, health professionals, and disabled students on campus to create equitable disabled services and procedures. on campus to create equitable disabled services and procedures, if the board truly cares about our students. Chancellor Rodriguez, I see that you and I and several of us have the same ashes on our foreheads. The question guides us Catholics, and all we do is, what would Jesus do? Is this what Jesus would have done? When the disabled people cried out to him, did he tell them, oh, no, the lack of help you are provided by society is unintentional? I have confidence that you will remember that Jesus Christ dedicated much of his mission on earth to serve and listen to disabled people, when society's leaders cast them aside. Jesus performed miracles to help the blind, paralyzed, and mentally disabled. So who are we as Catholics to not use everything in our power to make sure our disabled brothers and sisters do not have to go through hurdles to simply learn us alongside their peers? Thank you.
Next, um, Franz Kivit?
A, are more joining automatically, or?
Yes, we have four more that joined in for this topic for the closed session.
Okay.
Hello, Board of Trustees, my name is Franz Kivit, I'm a second-year community college student. The thing that I've learned the, the fastest about being a community student is just how strong, um, in dedicating powerful community college students here. I learned that, like, so many students are going through so many other, like, life hurdles and so many other challenges. And I'm just truly surprised by, like, how much my community college peers are able to take on and continue to do. Our DSPS students are students who are really challenged. They, they have, they have challenges that they need to, uh, have met, so they can continue to, um, have the same opportunities that are offered to all students. I urge you to please, um, reconsider your stance and to support DSPS students, thank you so much.
Sorry if I didn't say your name right, Saban, Youssef?
Hi, everybody, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. Uh, I desire today to address disability rights during this meetings. I believe disability rights should be, should not remain hostage by the LACC. We should have a more democratic process for voting, so that we have people representing us that care about people with disability. Thank you so much, I am so proud to be an American. Every time I see the American flag, I get so happy to see that I'm living in a free country. So I hope they will, will stay like that. Thank you so much, have a nice evening.
No? No?
Hello, LACC Board of Trustees, my name is Colonel Carney. I too am a Senator of Associated Students of Irvine Valley College. I encourage you not to proceed with the Payon-V-LACC case by taking it to Supreme Court, as it projects several damaging effects on a wide range of students. Speaking as a student with ADHD, LACC's legitimation of unintentionally discriminatory actions by modifying Section 504 at the Supreme Court level will greatly harm disabled students, because it sets a precedent for their needs and accommodations to be effectively ignored under this idea of disparate impact. In my case, I didn't realize how essential these accommodations were until I wasn't provided with them. When I was in high school and asked my teacher in one of my AP courses if I'd be able to receive extra time on an upcoming exam, I was denied this accommodation, because as he said, I wouldn't have extra time on the AP test. However, I was provided with extra time on the AP exam, even though he cited it as the reason that I wouldn't receive this accommodation. I feel that this experience is important to mention, because this is how disparate impact happens. The responsibility to accommodate students is completely shifted away from instructors, because they're simply unaware of the rights of disabled students. Additionally, I wanted to mention that pursuing this case on a national level may negatively affect LACC's stature. Given that the US Department of Education suggests that nearly sixty percent of students with disabilities who attend post-secondary institutions attend those with two years, two-year programs, or less, failure, failure to provide, uh, effective accommodations may significantly decrease the potential for future enrollment. I just wanted to end my public comment by saying that the best outcome of this complicated issue is to seek a mutually beneficial resolution with students Payon and Mason, rather than escalating the course to, the case to high court, and compounding its effect on students with disabilities. As the largest community college district in the nation with around two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three students, LACC has a moral and contractual obligation to its students first. Thank you for listening to my public comment.
So?
Hi, my name is Alexandria Wong, and I'm a non-traditional first-year student at Irvine Valley College. As a Senator of the Associated Students of IBC, who serves underrepresented populations and highly values creating a more considerate, equitable, and inclusive learning environment, it's deeply concerning to me that a neighboring educational district has taken such an inconsiderate stance towards accommodating DSPS students. Despite the already accentuating circumstances DSP, this DSPS students hold, whether at SOC CD, LACC, or any other district, they continue to strongly persevere with continuing a post-secondary education. We should all be celebrating their achievements and making proper adjustments to support their academic successes and efforts. However, by what is making, what is making what is supposed to be an equal educational opportunity to everyone inaccessible and unaccommodating, and by targeting a certain student population based on their personal difficulties, LACC is doing a disservice to their students. I please urge you to evaluate this case, to reallocate your funds to your students who so wholeheartedly want to pursue an equal education, thank you.
Or, huh? Go ahead, please.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kyler Chen. I'm the youth coordinator for Mahia for Controller, and I'm also a comm sci freshman at Pierce College. Uh, I use accessible education throughout high school, through my IEP, my 504, and I continue to use it in college, because we know how important it is to have accessible education, so that everyone, all Angelinos, can graduate successfully. Kenneth is a certified public accountant, and as a group of accountants, college leaders, and community organizers, we see this case as having severe financial implications for LACC and all Angelinos. Undermining the ADA, marginalized Angelinos at risk, and would make LACC's C schools less competitive by decreasing enrollment numbers and hurting those who would go to other schools. LACC, fighting this case would cost a district hundreds of thousands in legal fees, money that can instead be used to improve access to education and the quality of s, education for students. We should use the money to provide courses in Braille or audio formats. We are certified public accountants, and these tax dollars are for student education funding, for accessible education, not for legal fees. We urge the Los Angeles Community College District to consider the deep financial and moral implications of this case, and to prioritize the needs of blind students, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we're gonna now, um, recess to closed session. The board will, will recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph and Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54950, at sequence and, and the Education Code to, to discuss the matters on opposed to closed session, Agenda Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, by four point five. May I have a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Trustee Bella, trustee Henderson, second, roll call.
Trustee, I'm sorry, before the roll call, could, could we, could we specify what time we? Is it possible, uh, to take a bio break before we convene? Perhaps we can convene at, uh, six fifty-five or seven o'clock?
Can we make it seven, so we can just have a little bit of a break to stretch?
Um, uh, trustee, trustee Hoffman, I, I, I think, I, you're, anyway, uh, I'll, I'll text you about that. Uh, seven o'clock is fine, the three can be at seven o'clock at the link that you've been provided, um, roll call.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Okay, um, trustees, follow the link, and we will see you soon.